This is our first business meeting of the year, and we are all happy to be back in action. And David's going to tell me to speak into the microphone, so I'm going to do that. Thank you for being here, and we have a public charge. I'm going to let you read that and not read that to you, but if you don't mind putting your cellphones on silence, that would be great. We are going to start off with our arts moment, which we normally do before every meeting. And Ashley Nissler, if you would like to come and introduce our artists for the evening.
Good evening. It is my great pleasure to introduce Alan Shapiro, who was my teacher at the MFA program for writers at Warren Wilson. Alan Shapiro has published many poetry collections, including Real to Real, finalist for the Pulitzer Prize, and Night of the Republic, finalist for both the National Book Award and the International Griffin Prize. Four books of prose, including The Last Happy Occasion, finalist for the National Book Critics Circle Award, winner of the Kingsley Tufts Award, L.A. Times Book Prize, an award in literature for the American Academy of Arts and Letters, the William Carlos Williams Award from the Poetry Society of America. He is also a member of the American Academy of Arts and Sciences. His new book, Against Translation, will appear in March 2019.
Hi. I'm going to read one quick poem and then get out of your way. You may remember, the summer before last, there's a cemetery at the corner of Mount Sinai Road in eighty-six. And the summer before last, they had a sign up in front of the cemetery, which read, "Limited time, BOGO, free." If you know what BOGO is, it's buy one, get one free. It was up for about five months, and then they took it down. So I wrote a letter to the owner of the cemetery about that sign. And this is the poem I'm going to read. It's called Letter to the Cemetery Owner. Even driving by, even driving past that seventy, I thought, "You'd want to know," I saw the sign nailed to the front gate, the large, black, take heed, Gothic, vaguely Germanic script proclaiming, "Limited time, BOGO, free." I saw it, and I laughed. Limited time? No shit. Then wondered if laughing's what you had in mind. I mean, if you really wanted to be funny, wouldn't you have tried a little harder? Offered something more than a bare bones reduction of mine's ancestral soul-quaking terror of the abyss's total and unending isolation to BOGO? BOGO? Couldn't you have flattered us a little, dressed up in classier garb, your crass obsession with the bottom line? As if two graves for the price of one might make being dead a deal to die for? Where will it end? What's next? A drive-through viewing for the busy mourner? Pulling up as at a Burger King or bank beside a giant window where the coffin raised on stilts is tilted toward you so you don't even have to stop completely? Why, you could pitch it as a drive-by funeral, and here's your motto, "Remains to be seen if so inclined." My friend, don't get me wrong, it's not that I'm not interested. I am, I am. It's just that, well, there's no one in my life right now to share the extra hole with. And frankly, at my age, the odds aren't good. You could say I'm in the demographic of the funerially unattached, and as such, what I could use is a gravesite hotline, make that a tepid or a cool line better yet, a senior tender service, call it cinder, smolder, guaranteed to get the soon departed laid together in a double bed on that first and only blindest of blind dates. Because the fact is, pal, I didn't realize how very interested I am until I passed your sign, and laughing turned by habit, half expecting her, my recent ex, to be beside me laughing too, because she would have busted a gut, that much I know. And I miss that. I miss how even at the worst of times, her laugh could for the moment of the laugh at least dispel the stickiest of disaffections. It would have been a gift to hear it, a gift I might have half believed you meant for me alone, given freely as I drove past, and just as freely once passed, taken back. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Have a good evening. We're going to move on to public comments, please, and this is for things that are not on the printed agenda. And I have one person signed up, John Morris. You have three minutes to speak, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to bring an issue of open government and democratic process to your attention. Go Triangle Orange County and Durham County have set up a working group on light rail. I wanted to inform myself on this project, so I went to a meeting that was held on January ten, but I was not allowed to enter or participate. By letter of the law, there's not a quorum of any of the three boards on this working group, so no public notice is legally required. But these closed meetings are in effect blocking public scrutiny of key decisions. Here's how it works. In these meetings, the members of the group receive current information and evaluate policy choices, which are hidden from the public. No final decisions can legally be made in these meetings, but in fact, a consensus may be reached, which is then brought back to the three boards for an official decision. The Orange County Board, for example, will be presented consensus recommendations from the working group under time pressure for quick action and without having the full range of information that was available to the working group. The Light Rail project is at a critical stage with rapid design changes being made to try to resolve opposition and with cost increases multiplying. The project represents a key choice among transit investment options that will foreclose other options and will have a huge impact on county finances for decades. It's time now for full public discussion and review of the project as final decisions and commitments are considered under a very tight schedule. The public and elected officials who may later vote on the project need to get the information as it is developed and to follow the policy debate as it unfolds to be able to make the best decisions, not just to see limited information at the last minute for a vote. So I petition Orange County to work with its partners to open up the working group and other key meetings to the public and to the press. What is to be feared by allowing the public to see what is going on in these meetings? The results will actually be positive. Better public decisions are made if information and deliberations are carried out in public view. That's my firm belief. And public confidence in the boards of commissioners and in Go Triangle will increase if you let some more sunshine enter this process. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. John is the only one that is on that list. What we do with petitions is we refer them to staff, and staff will bring recommendations to agenda review. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to three announcements and petitions by the board, and let's start to my right with Commissioner McKee.
Thank you, Chair Rich. First thing I'd like to ask is that, as we all are aware, there's a DOT plan for the intersection of I-40 and eighty-six. There have been some amendments to that plan, one of which does not affect the neighborhood, the Northwood neighborhood nearly as much. And I will send maybe a draft resolution to the chair for Chair, Vice Chair Manager Review, possible consideration of bringing that back at our next meeting, which is, I think, three or four days before the actual public input session. The second thing that I was going to bring up, and Mr. Morris has already mentioned this, I'm going to second his petition or endorse his petition that we bring forward a resolution from our board that we would recommend and request and require transparency going forward on this light rail, the entire light rail, the entire transportation discussion. Our board and Orange County have long stood for transparency, engagement, and involvement of all our citizens on all decisions where possible. I understand that by law, there was no reason this meeting could not be held as it was. I don't particularly have any issue with that. The issue I have is with the moral imperative of making sure that when there is a divisive discussion, and this is a divisive discussion in the community, that every bit of information is available to the public at all times. I'm convinced that the more people that have input to a decision, the more questions that are asked before decisions made, the better decision is. And so I will endorse that petition to have us oppose any more closed meetings involving transportation issues and light rail as we go forward. I would also ask the board, and I would probably take this up with Go Triangle, but I would like to have minutes of this past January tenth meeting. And if I have missed it, my apologies, because I occasionally miss emails. But if I've missed the minutes from that meeting, my apologies. But going forward, I'd like to have minutes on all of these meetings for board members within seven working days. Thank you.
Commissioner Markopolos.
Commissioner Bedford was at commissioner training in Asheville, and so I filled in for her at a DSS meeting. I'd never attended a DSS Department of Social Services committee meeting, and I just wanted to share one factoid that I learned at that meeting that stuck with me. There are about 10,000 people in Orange County that rely on food assistance. And every time I run across these numbers, I feel like it's worth broadcasting it so people understand that in the midst of plenty here, there is great need. And it was brought up in the context of the government shutdown, and if the government doesn't reopen by the end of February, those people will have no funding for food as they have had up till this point. So just food for thought as we look ahead. Thank you.
Commissioner Bedford.
And so Sally and I did attend Boot Camp Essentials with the School of Government last Thursday and Friday, and I learned a lot, for sure. I also went to the Burlington Graham MPO. There was nothing really new. They were happy to have some funding, and they're getting ready to start SPOT six. I had to ask, what is SPOT six? So it's a good place to start learning. And on January fourth, I also had an individual meeting with Mr. Talmadge and Mr. Clark of Go Triangle, and really have nothing to report to the group other than we started at the very beginning with nineteen eighty-four in the legislature and talked about revenues. And the only pertinent question currently is, I did ask how the train meeting had gone the day before, and there was really no answer yet, just that it had been a great meeting. So there was nothing new to report then. Thank you.
Commissioner Price.
I'll have several, have several. I'll try to go through these quickly. First of all, many thanks to everyone that organized, participated in, or were there in spirit in the Martin Luther King Day events that happened this past weekend, as we continue to work to realize our shared dream. Now, I also have something on transportation. The Durham Chapel Hill Carboro MPO met last week, and as a result of that meeting, the State of the Region 2018 Report is out, and they will be receiving comments, they will like comments by January thirtieth. According to the agenda, they should come back to me, or I guess, well, they can go, they can go back to anyone on that board or staff. Also, the draft fiscal year 2020 Unified Planning Work Program, we voted to release that for public comment, and the public hearing for approval of that will be on February thirteenth. Let's see, next. And I would like similar, well, corresponding to what Commissioner Markopolos just mentioned, I have a petition for staff to keep us just mentioned, I have a petition for staff to keep us up to date or abreast of the effects of the federal government shutdown on Orange County residents, in addition to food. I know that the housing vouchers and some other programs are at risk. I was on a, the, NACO has a Rural Action Caucus, and I was on their conference call today, and one of the discussion items was the 2020 census, and a major concern is going to be an undercount. And that is primarily because they're going to try to do most of the census filing online or electronically, and for people that do not have access to the internet, or folks that live so far out in, you know, in rural areas that they may not have access, they're concerned about that. And whatever the number is, the census will determine a lot of our government program funding levels, as well as FCC broadband mapping. And so my request to staff is, how will Orange County address the possible lack of access and undercount on the 2020 census? And lastly, we received a letter from Orange County Schools regarding a resolution that they passed supporting local control of school calendars, and I would just ask that we respond to them in some way.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Thank you. At the Partnership in Homelessness meeting, I too heard the same statistics that Commissioner Markopolos alluded to, and just underscore the concern for those citizens of ours who may be running out of food and other assets pretty soon. I did enjoy with Commissioner Bedford our two days in Asheville, learning about being county commissioner, particularly the mock meeting, which was very entertaining, about all the things not to do. And I had a very inspiring time on Monday at the Mount Bright Church in Hillsborough at their Martin Luther King Celebration, which was very inspiring. And if you ever have a chance to hear the Martin Luther King Youth Choir, do not pass it up. They are fabulous. Want to announce again that I am holding office hours, my own personal office hours this Saturday, from 10:00 to 12:00 at Cupid Joe in Hillsborough, and I encourage all of you watching and listening and present here to come chat with me about your issues and concerns for Orange County. Thank you.
Commissioner Dorson.
Thank you. Since we last met, I attended the Fire Chiefs Association meeting on January 9th. I know the fire chiefs are coming, we're going to have a meeting with them coming up soon, I believe.
February 12th.
And one of the, one of the exciting things that I'm sure will be, I don't want to steal any of their thunder, but one of the exciting things that we'll be hearing about is this training facility. You know, they got a grant to have that burn building, and they've bid it out, and they are, you know, ideally, they'd like to have it somewhere in Hillsborough, centrally located for the convenience of all the departments. And so they were meeting, they were meeting with Durham Tech, I think, last week or this week, about possibly, you know, co-locating there, which would also help expedite the process, because Durham Tech already has an SUP approved from the town of Hillsborough. And so I'm sure we'll hear more about that, but it is very exciting. I also attended the, as the new voting delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, I attended the Legislative Conference, Legislative Goals Conference, which was very interesting, enlightening. I think I shared, I, based on our, this board's goal of expressly calling for the expansion of Medicare, I moved to amend the NCAACC's proposed goal on that topic, which, well, I felt the language was a little more ambiguous than ours. And I was, I'm happy to say it led to a spirited debate. In some aspects, very disappointing, hearing some of our colleagues who, despite the presence of lots of uninsured, low-income people in their communities, and threats to rural hospitals, were just not interested in, you know, really putting out the sort of conservative line against expanding Medicaid. But we did, you know, we, the vote for our resolution, which was the express expansion, we lost by two votes. So it was very, it was very close, and we had a lot of support from lots of commissioners and lots of communities. And then we were successful in defeating a separate amendment, which would have made the language even weaker. So that's, so that was a victory. One of the, one of our colleagues from one of the western counties had suggested the idea of all of the counties that supported the change doing resolutions. Again, I know we've already done that, but doing that again. It was interesting, because the session opened with Governor Cooper giving welcoming remarks, and his main remark was he's going to, that's his highest priority for the coming year. So, so that was a good meeting, and was happy to be there and represent. And then I just wanted to say one thing, just to pick up on Commissioner Price's point about the census. I guess maybe it was in 2000, I, the county had a, an advisory group that was set up. It was, you know, it was called the, you know, the, I can't remember what the commission was called, but the slogan was "You Count" in Orange County. It was basically a census, public education commission to tell people about what to expect, to, you know, you know, really, just to try to promote participation, and to let people know that if they had questions, that the county could have resources to answer them about how information, you know, why information was important, how it would be used. And there was, we had, there was a little bit of money that was used for advertising. That might, I'm not necessarily making this as a petition, but it might be worthwhile to look at what we did back then. I can't remember if there was something similar in 2010, but it was, it was a, we put a lot of energy, and there was a lot of engagement in 2000. So that may be something, especially if there are particular concerns about either procedural or actual questions on the, on the census that will lead to an undercount. So it might be worth just looking into. Chairman Rich, chairperson Rich.
Thank you. Just to let you know, we are going to be talking about that at the Assembly of Government meeting. The mayor of Chapel Hill wanted to raise some questions on that, so maybe there's room for collaboration there as well. And then in response to the schools petition, if you recall, in the agenda review, we were going to talk to the Visits Bureau, and we've gotten a response from the Visits Bureau, so we can bring that forward now. So that was the two steps on there. I don't think there was anything else I needed to do here. No. Okay, so, Mark, thank you, Commissioner Dorson, thank you so much for fighting for us. This is, this was important to us, we passed this resolution. Are you, are you saying that you want us to create another resolution, just again from support, or update the resolution?
Well, I can't remember how recently we did that resolution. It may, if it was recent, within the last year, maybe we could just revive it and send it around to all the, to all our colleagues, and, I mean, I can send it to the people I spoke one-on-one with. If it hasn't, if it's been more than a year, then I would recommend we do it again, in light of the NCAACC's action.
Let's let the clerk take a look at it and see where it is, and we'll get back in touch with you and see which way you want to go before the next meeting.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, yeah, real quick, it was a great weekend, this weekend, for MLK celebrations. Carboro, Commissioner Dorson and I went to the MLK groundbreaking for the park, and it was cold and wet, and everybody was happy, so that was a good thing. Ground is broken, I think they said they'll be up and running in the spring, or the summer? Was that what we?
Yeah, I think, I think early summer.
Yeah, so that's real exciting. It's been years and years and years, so that was, there was certainly excitement all around. And then in the afternoon, I went to the youth-led NAACP performance over at the Carboro Century Center, and that was just wonderful. It was all, all led by the youth, the adults were really not part of the program at all. It was, it was really great. And I did join Commissioner Green and Commissioner McKee and Commissioner Markopolos at the Mount Bright Church, and that was pretty exciting, too. So we had, and we all went to the banquet, too, so that was, we were busy. It was a busy weekend, it was great. MPO report that Commissioner Price raised, we're going in the wrong direction here, y'all, so I really wish that you would take a look at this report. We have more car crashes, we have more bicycle crashes, we have more bike crashes in Orange County than Durham County, and that's because more people are riding bikes here. But we're not sharing the road, and we're not doing a good job of educating people on how to share the road. And I just brought, I brought the report with me to tell you, the most crashes in Orange County happen at I-40 and NC-86. There's 21 crashes there. So that, we're leading in crashes in our area, so please take a look at that and send your comments. Commissioner McKee, I did talk to the neighbors and walked with the neighbors on the Plan B, and I believe that they were going to bring a petition forward, so maybe we'll...
That's the one I'm planning on submitting.
With Mr. Davis, Wadi Davis? Okay. And they were also going to bring that forward to the MPO board as well, so they're trying to get everybody on board with that.
That, if I might add, that is probably the least impactful possibility that I've seen so far.
Right.
And it makes sense. It's not to say that it is absolutely non-impactive on the traveling public, but it's also the least impactful on the neighborhood.
Right. And I, and I think that NC DOT got the message from the neighbors and from the elected bodies that...
That plan is from DOT.
Yeah. Sure, let me just finish, please. And then the, I did attend the Chapel Hill Legislative Breakfast, and I know you're going to laugh at this, but the biggest conversation was about the electric scooters around Chapel Hill, and I believe they're starting to look into creating some rules for that. I did attend a couple of other boards, but we can move on. Commissioner Price.
I just wanted to say, on the Northwood community, there was an elected officials meeting that was held, and they presented both Plan 4A and 4B, and there seemed to be a better feel about 4B. And also, it doesn't take out any homes, and it'll, even though they didn't have the numbers, it'll be less expensive.
If commissioners have time to go out, there's, 4B is actually flagged and staked off, it's exactly where the roadway will be.
Right, and the biggest concern with that is that becomes a super street, and Chapel Hill doesn't necessarily like super streets. So we have to talk to our colleagues at Chapel Hill also.
That was the drawback I was talking about.
Yes, Commissioner Bedford.
There were four or five council people and the mayor at the meeting, along with Mark, and they seemed very receptive, very receptive.
Right. Well, I think, I think anything to save people's homes and putting a highway through a neighborhood is going to be a good reaction. Okay, let's move to 4A, and we're going to move to proclamations, resolutions, and special presentations. We're going to start with the recognition of the Carboro High School, well, you know what? Is it the high school women's team, are they here? Okay, let's, let's do the other guys, because they're sitting here. Let's do the, the resolution, let's, if you don't mind, let's skip over to B, proclamation recognizing Chapel Hill High Soccer Men's Team for winning the 2018 state champions.
Good evening. We are, we are excited to have with us today the representatives from Chapel Hill for winning the state championship. It's their fifth championship overall. Coach Jason Curtis is here, so I will ask him to come up, and he has a few players with him, and he will introduce those, and then y'all can adopt the proclamation, and we will present it to him.
Can we get all the players up here, too, that are here? And while you're coming up and introducing everyone, Commissioner Markopolos is going to help us read the resolution.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Captain Max Ring, Kevin Morales, and another captain, Ryan Smith. They're all seniors, and this is their third straight state championship appearance, and we won the last two.
I was going to say, they look familiar.
Yeah.
Commissioner Markopolos.
Proclamation of recognition on Chapel Hill High School winning the 2018 state championship in men's soccer. Whereas on November 17th, 2018, the Chapel Hill High School Men's Soccer Team won the North Carolina High School Athletic Association's 3A state championship. And whereas, under the guidance of Coach Jason Curtis, the team won its fifth state championship and second in a row. And whereas, through hard work, dedication, teamwork, and commitment, the team brought honor upon themselves, Chapel Hill High School, the Chapel Hill-Carboro City Schools District, and Orange County. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Orange County Board of Commissioners expresses sincere appreciation and respect for the Chapel Hill High School Men's Soccer Team and Coach Curtis for their outstanding achievement and their inspiration to youth across North Carolina through their dedication, teamwork, and athletic prowess, this the 22nd day of January 2019. I thought I'd find the word dynasty in there somewhere, but it's not in there yet.
And do you want to move that resolution?
I'd move the resolution.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Congratulations. Let it go. Congratulations, gentlemen.
You get to take the resolution. He's holding on to these numbers. Max together. Congratulations. Hey, congratulations.
Thank you all for coming.
We got to get a picture.
I'm going to photobump. No.
You should, you should get in there.
All right.
I think I'm here.
One, two.
Look at that.
One, two.
They can squat, too.
Hang on. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Yeah. Study hard. All right. Okay, now we can move to proclamation recognizing the Carboro High School Women's Cross Country Team, and I believe that the coach is not able to make it tonight.
She had a last-second problem come up and could not make it, so I'll present it to her at the school after y'all.
Great. Commissioner Bedford is going to read that resolution for us.
Proclamation of recognition on Carboro High School winning 2018 state championship in women's cross country. Whereas on November 3rd, 2018, the Carboro High School Women's Cross Country Team won the North Carolina High School Athletic Association's 2A state championship. And whereas, under the guidance of Coach Meneo Grady, the team won its sixth state championship. And whereas Hannah Preiser won the individual state championship, becoming the seventh Jaguars runner to win an individual state title. And whereas, through hard work, dedication, teamwork, and commitment, the team brought honor upon themselves, Carboro High School, the Chapel Hill-Carboro City Schools District, and Orange County. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Orange County Board of Commissioners expresses its sincere appreciation and respect for the Carboro High School Women's Cross Country Team and Coach O'Grady for their outstanding achievement and their inspiration to youth across North Carolina through their dedication, teamwork, and athletic prowess, this the 22nd day of January 2019. And I move the resolution.
Move, and seconded by Commissioner Price. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. And Todd, you'll make sure that they get that recognition. Okay, folks, let's move along to 4C, and this is to approve a resolution recognizing and expressing gratitude to Andy Sacks for his service to the Orange County Board of Commissioners and the people of Orange County as a coordinator for the Dispute Settlement Center. And Andy, why don't you come up to the mic, and we're going to have Commissioner Dorson read that resolution for you.
Orange County Board of Commissioners, resolution of recognition for Andrew Sacks. Whereas Andrew, Andy Sacks, coordinator for the Dispute Settlement Center, retired in October 2018. And whereas, Mr. Sacks served as a mediator, group facilitator, and conflict resolution trainer since 1980. And whereas, Andy has been a member of multiple state and national organizations, including serving on the Board of Directors for the North Carolina Mediation Network for 14 years. And whereas, Andy has helped and supported many local agencies and governments through extremely challenging issues. And whereas, Mr. Sacks assisted Orange County government by mediating multiple projects over the years, including school collaboration, the comprehensive plan, school merger discussions, the firearm safety committee, and multiple Board of County Commissioner retreats. And whereas, the Orange County Board of Commissioners will deeply miss Andy's skills and expertise in bringing potentially volatile issues to a productive conclusion. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Orange County Board of Commissioners expresses its deep appreciation, gratitude, and respect for the mediation services throughout the community provided by Andrew Sacks for Orange County government and the people of Orange County, and that the board wishes him well in his retirement, this the 22nd day of January 2019. Should also say, you're a fabulous mensch. I move this proclamation.
Moved and seconded by Commissioner Green. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. You can come, anyway.
Thank you, Andy.
You're invited to the retreat. I have to ask Donna.
or otherwise would not even sit down with each other and actually come to some sort of agreement, even if everyone didn't give what they wanted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner McKee. Okay, let's move on to 4D, and this is the Alcohol Beverage Control ABC Board update, and we're going to receive a brief presentation from the representatives of Orange County and provide any feedback. And welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Tony Dubois.
Oh, Tony Dubois, sorry.
General Manager, I think it listed me as executive...
You're Mr. Bagley.
I think it listed me as Executive Director, which is all good.
Yes.
Keith Bagley, Jane Cousins are here, the Board Chair and Board Vice Chair. Thank you for welcoming me. This is my ninth year to come here. I think my 10th anniversary, somebody mentioned I was supposed to bring bourbon or something, so something to look forward to next year. Four of you have been either on our board or liaison for the board, and, you know, a lot of things have happened in the last nine years, but I'm going to focus on the past year. So you see in front of you in a presentation how much money we've given to community organizations in the last year. It's over $1 million for the first time ever. Orange County received $535,000. And I'm not going to read off the numbers, but I'm going to read off the names of the organizations that we contributed money to this past year. The Compass Center for Women, Pathways to Change, El Centro Hispano, Mental Health Orange County Team Partnership, Carpe Diem, El Futuro, Freedom House Recovery, a unique partnership with University of North Carolina, the Health Department, and the ABC Board, the Chapel Hill UNC Collaborative, Orange County Schools, Orange County Drug Court, Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools, also the Hillsborough Police Department, the Carboro Police Department, the Chapel Hill Police Department, and Orange County Sheriff's Department. So we have involvement with all of those agencies in the last year. And really, you know, that's kind of what makes the ABC Board unique, is that we really do put a lot of money back into the community to offset funds that may have to come from somewhere else. And, you know, we recognize that the social impact, you know, of misuse of our product and how it can cause problems, and we try to, you know, give money in areas that'll offset that. The agencies we give to not only support that cause, but they also educate and then try to help reduce that. And we're not only motivated by profit, you know, we have a deep tie to the community by being responsible sellers to those we serve, by creating a great example of customer service at the same time, you know, because everybody doesn't abuse our product. There's lots of people that just come in and buy it and enjoy it responsibly. In the past year, focusing on that, we completely remodeled our Carboro store. We tore down almost everything in there and rebuilt it. It's now, it's a really beautiful, modern store. It's a lot larger, has a lot more products than we had in there before. This year coming up, I'm sorry, the year we're in, we are remodeling, actually, we're moving a store in Hillsborough. So we're going to close down one store and open up another store in between 40 and 85, right on Chertan Street. It's right next to Jersey Mike's and the Pizza Hut, for reference. So we're really looking forward to that this year. It's going to be a really nice, modern store, and that's pretty much what I have. What questions do you have for me?
Any questions? Commissioner Dorson?
So where's the store that's closing that's going to be moved to that?
We like to call it the Bojangles Store. That's the one right there with, like, six parking spaces.
Okay. So I had a...I'm just curious, the...how do you determine how much each of the police departments get? I thought it was the...I saw the sheriffs gets $100,000, the other ones get much less, and, I mean, it just seems like...I mean, I know there's a lot of alcohol-related enforcement issues in and around Chapel Hill, and so I'm just wondering how those amounts get decided.
They put in funding requests for a specific year that's coming up, operations they're going to do, equipment they may need to buy, so we base it off of that. And usually, it's pretty close to what they ask for.
And then, this is more of a policy question, so there was, you know, I...you might have heard, I was at this North Carolina Association of County Commissioners thing, and one of the hot topics was this question about the future of the state ABC Commission, you know, that there's talk that there may be bills introduced in this session. You know, there was the state auditor's report that came out last summer, I guess, that showed, at least at the state level, serious financial mismanagement. I'm just wondering, as from the ABC, local ABC perspective, if you've heard anything about any of that, or if you have any sense of, you know, what the mood is, or what people are saying about the likelihood of potential significant changes in the state regulatory structure?
Sure. We talk about it just because it kind of would impact us the most. The state structure would stay the same, I would guess, because there's always going to be a regulatory agency over alcohol sales, no matter what. Now, the way it's sold locally, I mean, when I got hired, I was...I worked in Wade County 12 years ago, and I was reading a magazine that said it could get privatized any day, and I thought, what am I doing? This is a really stupid career decision. So, you know, it's just one of those things that's completely out of our hands, that, you know, we like the way it works now. We think it really does help the community in the fact that it impacts locally in ways that where Washington State privatized, all the prices went sky-high, outlets increased by four or five times, and theft went up by hundreds of percent. So there's been lots of negative impacts on...I mean, and really recent impacts that show that it's maybe not a good idea, but, you know, it's my job, so what am I supposed to say? I mean, you know, I think it's...the way it works now is actually a really good system.
Any other questions?
I just had a comment, which is, I wanted to express appreciation to see that the funding request, the funding coming back to the county has increased. That's something that when I was on the...not on the board, when I was the liaison, we...I had raised on behalf of the board, and, you know, it was gratifying to see it got raised for the first time in a while, in several years recently, and then to see it raised again, an additional $35,000 is encouraging to see that, again, to see some of that. In addition to all the funding that goes to the law enforcement and to the programming, to see a portion of that money coming back to the general fund is really critical, so I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move along to 4E, resolution requesting that Representative David Price endorse Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez's resolution for a select committee on a Green New Deal. And Commissioner Mark Kopoulos, I'm going to ask you to talk a little bit about this and maybe read the resolution. We have one person that wants to speak on this.
Yeah, well, I'll just say briefly that we've, in the last year or two, come to realize that this is really an existential crisis that requires immediate and very strong action. And it requires action on all fronts, on, you know, social justice fronts, economic justice, people have to have a good livelihood, we have to have, you know, a revolution in our energy generation. And when I read the resolution, that will encompass all the various aspects that Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez brought into this Green New Deal resolution.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and read that, and then we can hear from the speaker?
Whereas on October 8, 2018, the United Nations released a special report criticized by many leading climate scientists as overly conservative, which projected that limiting warming to the unsafe 1.5 degrees centigrade target this century will require an unprecedented transformation of every sector of the global economy over the next 12 years. And whereas, on November 23, 2018, the federal government issued a climate study detailing the massive threat that climate change poses to the American economy and underscoring the need for immediate climate emergency action at all levels of government. And whereas, the death and destruction already wrought by global warming of approximately 1.1 degrees centigrade above late 19th-century levels demonstrates that the earth is already too hot for safety and justice, as attested by increased and intensifying wildfires, floods, rising seas, diseases, droughts, and extreme weather. And whereas, restoring a safe and stable climate requires a climate mobilization at all levels of government on a scale not seen since World War II to reach zero greenhouse gas emissions across all sectors at emergency speed, to rapidly and safely draw down or remove all the excess carbon from the atmosphere, to end the sixth mass extinction of species, and to implement measures to protect all people and species from the increasingly severe consequences of climate change. Whereas, to address the nation's urgent climate change needs and impacts, Congresswoman Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez has proposed a Green New Deal. And whereas, the proposed Green New Deal would be a sweeping overhaul of the economy that includes equity and justice in its solutions and has the following goals. One, dramatically expand existing renewable power sources and deploy new production capacity with a goal of meeting 100% of national power demand through renewable resources. Two, building a national energy-efficient smart grid. Three, upgrading every residential and industrial building for state-of-the-art energy efficiency, comfort, and safety. Four, eliminating greenhouse gas emissions from the manufacturing, agricultural, and other industries, including by investing in local state agriculture in communities across the country. Five, eliminating greenhouse gas emissions from repairing and improving transportation and other infrastructure, and upgrading water infrastructure to ensure universal access to clean water. Six, funding massive investment in the drawdown of greenhouse gases. Seven, making green technology industry expertise products and services a major export of the United States with the aim of becoming an international leader in helping other countries transition to completely greenhouse gas-neutral economies and bringing about a Green New Deal. Whereas, justice calls for climate resilience that addresses the specific experiences, vulnerabilities, and needs of marginalized communities within our jurisdiction who must be included and supported in actively engaging in climate resilience planning, policy, and actions. And whereas, actions to eliminate greenhouse gas emissions and/or drawdown greenhouse gases may be taken in ways that also improve resilience to the effects of climate change and vice versa. And whereas, justice requires that frontline communities, which have historically borne the brunt of the extractive fossil fuel economy, participate actively in the planning and implementation of this mobilization effort at all levels of government, and that they benefit first from the transition to a renewable energy economy. And whereas, fairness demands the protection and expansion of workers' rights to organize as well as a guarantee of high-paying, high-quality jobs with comprehensive benefits for all and many other tenets of a Green New Deal effort as the mobilization to restore a safe climate is launched. Now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County Board of Commissioners declares that a climate emergency threatens our county, region, state, nation, civilization, humanity, and the natural world. Be it further resolved that the Orange County Board of Commissioners request that Representative David Price join the growing number of his congressional peers and endorse Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez's resolution for a select committee on a Green New Deal. And I believe there's between 40 and 50 representatives that have endorsed this, and the numbers are growing every week.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Mark Kopoulos. Does anyone have any questions before we hear from the speaker? Okay, Mr.... I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, okay. Yes, I...
After the speaker.
I'm sorry?
After the speaker.
Yes, I'm...
No, I don't have any questions.
You want to wait till afterwards? Okay, great. Mr. Riley Ruskey, you'll have three minutes, please.
Thank you. I'm Riley Ruskey, a United States citizen, a veteran, a resident, and taxpayer in Orange County. Three minutes is not remotely enough time to discuss Agenda Item 4E, the Green New Deal resolution. If the commissioners truly believe in open and transparent government and the responsibility to listen to the citizens they represent, then they should schedule several public hearings on this matter before bringing it to a vote. These hearings should invite both supporters and opponents of the Green New Deal for open discussion, so our citizens can be fully informed of this proposal and inform the commissioners of their wishes. The North Carolina Constitution, Article 6, Paragraph 7, prescribes the first part of the county commissioner's oath of office as, and I quote, "I do solemnly swear affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States," unquote. Excuse me. Tonight, the commissioners propose to consider a resolution of support for the Green New Deal, a radical agenda hiding behind a concern about climate change. The Green New Deal is actually an effort to destroy our democratic republic and its Constitution and replace them with a hybrid socialist-communist bureaucracy that has virtually nothing to do with climate change. This will end the rights and freedoms of our citizens that are guaranteed by the Constitution and laws of the United States. The action Agenda Item abstract write-up is grossly misleading, as shown by a clear reading of the attached Green Party platform. Any person who wants to experience the result of such a radical change should move to Venezuela for a year. Just be sure to take enough food, medicine, and supplies to last the year. The citizens of our county should not be fooled by this effort to turn America into a socialist-communist China, North Korea, Cuba, Venezuela, or Russia. Again, the county commissioner's oath states, "I do solemnly swear affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States." Any county commissioner who votes for this resolution is willfully abandoning their oath of office.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McKee?
Yes, I do have a question. I would like to know what...if this was enacted, it would cost? And if none of us know, that's a rhetorical question, not an actual question. If none of us know, it'll be in the trillions. If anyone...I've got several comments to make, but I'm going to wait and see if anyone else has a question.
Okay. Any more questions? Commissioner Price?
There's a lot in this resolution, but in the end, I think, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you're really just asking David Price to support the forming of a committee.
Right.
So we're not really endorsing...I mean, you might personally be endorsing it, but we're not saying that we're endorsing everything that's entailed in this at this point in time.
Well, that's up to you. You could decide whether you just want to...
No, I meant with this resolution, we're not saying that we're...
Well, I mean, the resolution kind of speaks for itself. It basically says that these conditions are so pressing and the need's so great that we need to form a select committee to enact a Green New Deal.
Right, but at this point, it would just be to have the committee, so we're not saying that we're going to, like, in six months, sign on to this. I mean, put it all in...implement a plan such as this.
I'm not sure how to parse that exactly.
Okay, but I think I get it from the last two, be it resolved. We're really...we're acknowledging the fact that there is climate change and a crisis, and we want an exploratory committee or something to...or a special task force to move forward to looking into it, without necessarily saying that we are going to enact or implement all of the different parts that have been suggested in the Green New Deal.
Do you want to respond?
No, but I would like to have just responded. Commissioner McKee?
Okay, hold on one second. Commissioner Green? Commissioner Price is correct. There's a...what's being talked about is the Green New Deal is very complicated and has a lot of parts, including parts that would speak to the very workings of our democracy. And one of the things that the Green...the proposed Green New Deal would do is to change the status of corporations from citizens. It would restore a lot of democracy that we used to think we had. It could...it's going to cost money. We don't know what it looks like yet. The resolution does just ask Representative Price to support a committee on the new Green Deal. As we all know, things don't get...don't happen in Congress overnight, so it's really supporting... it's really asking our representative to go in the direction of supporting what...exploring what this might look like, and, yes, hopefully coming to a resolution of a Green New Deal that will really be helpful, because to the question of what would it cost to do it, one might respond, what is going to cost all of us not to do something dramatic and, yes, radical like this, because, as has been noted, our country, our world, our climate, our earth is at a crisis point, and we've got to do something.
Thank you. Commissioner Bedford?
Well, one of my concerns with the party platform is some of the economic changes they want to make, but overall, I agree with Commissioner Price and Commissioner Green about the resolution. But my question also is, have we...has anyone spoken with Congressman Price or asked him why he hasn't quickly supported this, or if he intends to, or I just feel before we... before I want to, you know... It would restore a lot of democracy that we used to think we had. It could, it's going to cost money. We don't know what it looks like yet. The resolution does just ask Representative Price to support a committee on the new Green Deal. As we all know, things don't get, don't happen in Congress overnight, so it's really supporting, it's really asking our representative to go in the direction of supporting what, exploring what this might look like, and yes, hopefully coming to a resolution of a Green New Deal that will really be helpful, because to the question of what would it cost to do it, one might respond, what is going to cost all of us not to do something dramatic and, yes, radical like this, because as has been noted, our country, our world, our climate, our Earth is at a crisis point, and we've got to do something.
Thank you. Commissioner Bedford?
Well, one of my concerns with the party platform is some of the economic changes they want to make, but overall, I agree with Commissioner Price and Commissioner Green about the resolution. But my question also is, have we, has anyone spoken with Congressman Price or asked him why he hasn't quickly supported this, or if he intends to, or I just feel, before we, before I want to, you know, do a resolution like this, that we should have a conversation with our representatives. So I did, the office was closed yesterday. I left a message at 2:42 today at the local office, but, you know, I just don't think it's the best way to approach working with Congressman Price. But otherwise, I very much support the need to work on climate change and that this is a very watered-down resolution in the end to just, you know, consider having the committee.
Commissioner Markopolis?
Well, I was just simply gonna say what Commissioner Green said, that what is the cost if we don't spend the money to protect the Earth, our society, the natural world? So that, I mean, that always has to be kept in mind. And in terms of, you know, the idea of asking Representative Price privately, this is essentially asking him on behalf of the citizens of the county publicly with a lot of definition of what it is we're concerned about. And I think that there's value in that public approach.
Yeah, comments. Let me be clear. I do not argue, I would not argue with a resolution that said we have concerns about climate change and how to change it and how to address it, if that was specifically what this document said. It's not what this document says. I would not have concerns over Congressman Ocasio-Cortez's New Green Deal if it was more spelled out, and if her, and if she were willing to come forward with projected cost and be honest about what the real changes will be. Now, there are some things in here that I totally agree with. Building a national energy-efficient smart grid, that's a no-brainer. I think, I don't think, I don't know anyone that would oppose that. Making green technology industry expertise products and services a major export of the United States with the aim of becoming an international leader and helping other countries transition to completely greenhouse gas, natural econ, greenhouse gas-neutral economies and bringing about a global change. We're going in that direction anyway over time. I don't argue that. There are other things in here that I can agree with. Guarantee, and this is a major one that we ought to implement tomorrow. Guarantee us a voter-marked paper ballot for all voting. You'd eliminate about 99.9% of voter fraud with that one move. Restore the vote to ex-offenders who pay their debt to society. Once you, once you've paid your time, once you've done your time, once you've paid back society for your offense, I see no reason that can be held to withhold a vote. So let's get to what I object to on this. And I think that I'm not overstating that, to some extent, Ms. Ocasio-Cortez is fear-mongering. This is a Chicken Little, Skies-Falling proclamation that if we don't do these things in the next 12 years, we're all gonna go to hell in a handbasket, and we're not, not in 12 years. Now, I agree, there's cost to not doing nothing, but no one in the United States that I'm aware of is opposed to doing anything, except the people at Flat don't want to see what's going on. I don't know that there's a lot of opposition to a lot of moving from fossil fuel to solar to natural or any other type of green energy. But when we get to things like fair taxation that's distributed in proportion to ability to pay, I have an extreme question, where's the top rate and why is that not a confiscation of wages if those, that rates are set at 90%?
Is that in the resolution that you're reading?
That is in this right here, page number four, top of the page.
Yeah, but it's —
It's not in the resolution.
It's not in the resolution, but it is an attachment that is attached to the resolution, folks. Nationalize private bank, Federal Reserve banks, nationalization. That is a socialist move. Nationalization effect on stockholders, on page three. The right to accessible and affordable utilities, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, publicly-owned, operated, cost-not-for-profit. You would have to nationalize these and think of the, think of the effect that's gonna be on 401K, all the way from the bankers that this seems to focus on, all the way down to Joe and Jane at Works and it just has a 401K. Establish a 90% tax on bonuses for bailed-out bankers. Bankers were bailed out years ago. This is a retroactive act that I don't even think's constitutional. And I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know, I don't know, but I see no way that's constitutional. And before I get too excited, I'll stop right here.
Okay, Commissioner Dorson?
Well, I've got one more thing. Reducing military spending for 50%, closing U.S. military bases around the world, that is so short-sighted and dangerous, I won't even address it.
Commissioner Dorson?
Yeah, well, I would just say that none of that is in the resolution, and it's my understanding that this document, that's these, this explanatory document is not gonna be attached to the resolution or is part of it. I mean, I don't, what I understand the resolution to say is we would like the, to see this committee to develop a Green New Deal be formed. I don't know, and we don't know what it will cost, because we don't know what it is yet. They haven't, they haven't come up with the plan. This is one group's vision of it. It's certainly not, you know, I don't think we're voting on endorsing that. And I'm not even sure I was included in the agenda packet, actually, because I think it's a distraction from what the basis of the actual resolution is. So I'm happy to endorse the resolution. I think, you know, what we're saying is, let's start the debate and make this a policy priority in developing, you know, a plan, a Green New Deal, you know, again, it's, we could, they could call it a green Marshall Plan, right? We like these same terms of things that we've done successfully in the past. And I think that, you know, for those reasons, it's worth endorsing. And I would just also echo what Commissioner Markopolis said about, I appreciate Commissioner Bedford's idea of having a conversation with Commissioner Price, but I also believe that to the extent we can have these discussions in public, it is to the advantage. It would have been great if we'd have heard from him, but here, this is before us now, and so I'm happy to endorse it.
Commissioner Markopolis?
So just for the record, I did not insert that, the Green Party's take on the Green New Deal. I think it was a good faith effort by our staff to provide some background information on what an organization might bring to such a select committee, and one organization of many. I wasn't even aware of this document. I did write the resolution based on a couple of other resolutions. So none of that's in the resolution, right? I mean, that's just, it's irrelevant at this point to the resolution. And you know, if there, you know, if the select committee is formed, there will be many ideas brought forth and debated. That's the nature of democracy, so.
Commissioner McKee?
The resolution stands on its own.
I think Commissioner Price had her hand up before I did.
What, why don't you go first?
Well, let's speak to what is in the resolution itself. The first where is, limiting warming to the unsafe 1.5-degree centigrade target, this century will require an unprecedented transformation of every sector of the global economy over the next 12 years. We're not talking about U.S. economy, we're talking global. In order to do that, you're effectively going to have to institute some sort of global government, either through United Nations oversight or more radical. Also, moving down to the fourth where is, remove all excess carbon from the atmosphere to end the sixth mass extinction of species. I do not have any idea what scientific basis that is, that is based, that's set on. If you're talking about a mass extinction, you're talking about something that's only happened supposedly five times in about, what, 13 billion years? I'm quite well aware that the attachment is not part of the resolution, but for us to pass this resolution with the conversation that's going on about the Green New Deal and with the, what I consider, and I don't realize I'm one person, but what I consider the excesses of the verbiage in this attachment, which is part of the Green New Deal, by implication, if by nothing else, we are endorsing the Green New Deal with the verbiages in it. I mean, I have no problem coming back and picking things that are reasonable, things that we, that are attainable, but when you talk about nationalizing U.S. economy, which this will do, when you talk about a 12-year timeframe to actually implement all this, 12 years, folks, I've been on this board for eight years, and you're talking 12 years to change the global economy? I don't think there's a single one I've seen here that, sitting on this board or anywhere, or even listening, if anybody's listening, that believes that this can be done in 12 years. It is, that's, if we're gonna do a resolution, let's form our own committee, let's invite the community to, the same thing we did with the gun safety committee, the same thing we did with public safety, we formed a commission, we formed a committee to sit down, have all sides talk about it, and come forward with something that is dual, not something that is pie in the sky for me, very reasonable for other people. I'm not saying that, and I've, and I didn't outline everything in here that I agree with, but there are things in here that are not doable, there are things in here that are not reasonable. There are things in here that are straight-up socialist, dangerous in this attachment. And there are things in the resolution that we don't need to do, and we don't need to touch it tonight, put it off, form a committee, and bring it back. If it brings it back in identical, the same way, I won't support it, but I won't make a big issue of it like I'm making tonight. And that's all I'm, that's as far as I'll go.
Commissioner Price?
Yeah, back to my original questions. I think it's been answered, so, Commissioner Markopolis, the, that attachment from the Green Party, is that, is that the definitive Green New Deal? Or is that just one entity's outline?
As far as I know, it's just one entity's suggestions for the debate, for the discussion.
Okay. And when, if we send this on to Congressman Price, that attachment will not go?
No, like I said, I —
Because you said that you didn't even —
I just submitted the resolution.
Okay.
That's all I did.
All right, and this is kind of a rhetorical question, devil's advocate type. So if we were to delay, would it, would you be comfortable with sending it to the Commission for the Environment and coming back? I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, I'm in, I'm in favor of, you know, forming the committee, but, you know, just in hearing comments of having public discussion.
I don't think there's time to waste. I think that the, you know, the science is behind the sixth mass extinction, the 12 years, the science backs all this up, and I would just soon have a straight-up vote. If we support it as a board, that would be great. I hope we do. If we don't, then we'll know where we stand.
Okay. Commissioner Green?
Yes, thank you. If it would be of any help to, if it were any, of any help, I would propose striking the phrase "over the next 12 years" and striking the phrase "to end the sixth mass extinction of the species," just to make it more, kind of more general. Maybe, maybe that would resolve some of Commissioner McKee's problems with it, probably not all of them. But I also would want to point out that in terms of the highest, the tax rate on the highest Americans, that was as high as 70% and higher up until the 1980s, I think. So that, and that was during the time when the United States was very actively fighting socialism and communism. So I don't really think that, I would just, I would just take objection to calling that itself a socialist proposal. And in terms of the, what you mentioned about requiring an international government, I don't really think that's what it says. It says that the United Nations released this report, which is, which is very critical, that does say that the global economy is going, the whole globe is going to have to, perhaps not Belize where I was over Christmas, which is doing a lot of environmental and good things. In fact, when I was there, it struck me that they are trying, they have, you know, rainforests and very pristine environment, that they're doing everything to protect, and it's the Western world that's doing everything to destroy their barriers, despite what they are trying to do. But in general, it is the globe that is going to have to solve this problem, and to say that is not to say that we're going to have a world government.
Commissioner McKee?
Commissioner Green, I think I was very clear. I stated my opinion on that, and I also stated it might have to be something to, an entity such as the United Nations. But the background, the attachment documents are what really concerned me more than the resolution. And the background, the attachment documents are part of this, and the Green New Deal is based on this, or this is based on Green New Deal. So I'm quite well aware of this. As I mentioned, there are things in here I support, but I am extremely leery of some of these changes. And as far as the 70% tax rate in the '70s, that was confiscatory, that was confiscatory also. I would have opposed, I mean, I opposed that just as much as I'd opposed the 90%.
Well, it was even higher starting in World War II. It just never came down below 70 until much later.
World War II was a national, was a true national emergency.
Okay, let's try to, let's try to close this circle on this conversation. Attachment one is from the Green Party. It is one, one opinion on how the, how the Green New Deal can work. It is not going to be attached to the resolution. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
As far as I know, the resolution stands alone. There is no attachment reference.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Green, two more things before we go to that. I'm sorry, Commissioner Green. We, Commissioner Bedford, we send a lot of resolutions off to folks before we talk to them, so this is not unusual for us to do. If you go back and, the clerk can help you, we almost always send it to all our, all our other counties. We've sent things to the governor without talking with him before also. So it is, it is more of a public process when we send resolutions on. Commissioner Markopolis, are you okay with some of the suggestions that Commissioner Green made with the wording before we go forward?
I think the phrase "the next 12 years" may be the most important phrase in the resolution, frankly. It is what climate scientists have come to understand, and it is the unnerving fact about climate change, and we need to alert people that this needs very, very quick and focused action. And the sixth mass extinction goes along with that as well. It's, it's happening, and the science is there. You can find it.
It's not. About the sixth mass extinction, there's no way to define it.
Okay, so we have a suggestion from Commissioner McKee to form a committee. Are you, are you making a motion on that?
No, I'm not making a motion.
Okay.
I'm gonna leave that to the board's decision. I'm just saying that we have had issues before us before that we put out to a committee.
I would, I would move the resolution and then see what may come next.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Markopolis?
I'll second it, and to just to Commissioner McKee's point about it being pie in the sky, I would just remind us of the words of Robert Browning, who said, "A man's reach should exceed his grasp."
Or what's ahead and far.
That's right.
Okay, so we have a second on that. Are there comments, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution as it's worded, say aye. Aye. Against?
No.
Okay, that passes 6-1. Thank you for the discussion. Go on to, yes, Commissioner Dorson, I'm sorry.
I would put in front of the board, I do think that it may be worthwhile to ask our Environmental Advisory Board to consider some of the, to get the transcript of this discussion and see if they want to take the issue up for further, you know, just as an agenda item for them.
That'd be great. I think that's good.
So that, you can take that as a form of — So that, you can take that as a form of petition if you want, or-
Do we need a petition on that, or could we just move it for-
No, we'll present it to the Commission on the Environment.
Okay, and we'll get some sort of report back or some sort of discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Price?
Just one more thing. I think what's being alluded to in this first whereas is something that I feel it keeps getting left out of the discussion is the effect on climate change for various populations that are, they're going to be migrating, people, if they survive, they will be migrating. And we really haven't, we seem to gloss over the fact that people are going to be moving into, they're going to have to leave the countries where they are and moving to other places. And that's happening now. So if we could, you know, add that to the, to the discussion, or as you continue to work on this issue.
It's actually alluded to in one of the whereas's in there.
That's what I mean, yeah, it's alluded to, but we need to really, I think, continue to press that.
Okay. So we have no public hearings, and there's nothing on the regular agenda, so we're going to move to reports in 7A, Orange County Public Transportation Short Range Transit Plan. And tonight, we're going to receive the plan and get some feedback for Mr. Littman, and then we are going to have a full discussion on January 25th, which is Friday at our retreat. And welcome, Mr. Littman.
Thank you.
For Littman, I'm sorry. I have a friend Littman, so it just, like, stuck in my head.
Thank you, Chair Rich, and good evening, fellow commissioners. Theo Littman, Orange County Public Transportation. We're here tonight to present to you the Orange County Short Range Transit Plan draft, and we're going to discuss it further in detail at the retreat in the next coming days. Wanted to give you a little background on the report, how it came to be. About a year and a half ago, Go Triangle reached out to us and offered some transportation, some transit planning assistance. They had a contract with a consultant firm, Nelson Nygaard, and they were already working on contracts with them to do their transit planning, as well as in conjunction with the Wake County Transit Plan. And we just had a chance to have some professional support and consulting about how our system should look in the short range, and to make recommendations for the next 10 years. It was a year-long effort. We had multiple public outreach events. We did, we presented at community centers. We did surveys online, as well as on our vehicles. Go Triangle has had a website out where folks can go online and give their opinion. We also had multiple conference calls with the consultant, with Go Triangle staff. We debated, we talked about ideas for our transportation system, and that's what the plan, that's how the plan was developed. Some of the, some of the things in the plan, just wanted to highlight briefly. In the executive summary, it talks about some priorities. We have the Hillsborough Circulator, the Orange to, I mean, the Hillsborough to Chapel Hill Connector, as well as the Orange Alamance Connector, which are our current fixed routes. And one of the, some of the feedback that we've gotten is support for all three fixed routes. However, our county is a rural county, for the most part, and there is probably more of a focus on demand-response transportation as opposed to fixed route transportation. And so one of the things, one of the recommendations that we came up with was this idea called microtransit, which I think we've talked about in the past. And North Carolina DOT is now taking on that idea, and they're referring it to as mobility on demand. And the idea is to provide more nimble services for citizens and patrons that meet their more present need, rather than sending an industrial-sized bus up and down the highway. Folks want to get out and travel. In our county in particular, we have a lot of seniors. I think this board has talked about aging in place, and we want to be able to meet that specific need here in this county. There are other counties, and they have other needs, but in our county, I think, and the report shows in our analysis, there's more of a demand-response need in this county. So, and we'll discuss that more on, at the retreat, and present more ideas pursuant to that.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Theo? Commissioner Markopolis?
So I've talked about a park-and-ride in White Cross before.
Markopolis Park-and-Ride.
And since I noticed that the White Cross commuter service, looks like we're not ready for that yet, but I'm wondering how that, how that fits into our, our local plan, any consideration of that. And the way I first brought it up at an MPO meeting was thinking about game days, football and basketball games, when, I live out there, so I just see this river of cars, this stream, I mean, you could spend a lot of time waiting to get on 54 at those times, and a really inexpensive gravel lot, park-and-ride in White Cross, would be really useful on those days, and it might lead to further, quicker use of park-and-ride out in that area. So I'm just curious how that works from our county level, initially mentioning it to DOT.
I think more, that's more of on our planning side and our capital or transit amenities side, and we can definitely take that, take that up as a priority to, as we progress through our transit planning process. Recognize there are limitations to what we can do in present, in the short term. And so we've listed, you know, priorities as based upon the public's view of things, but that's not to say we can't, you know, bring things up even further for down the road.
And there's a UNC storage, record storage building out there that has a lot of space around it, and a lot of people that are driving on 54 go to UNC. It'd be worth opening up a conversation with UNC to see if they might be willing to help.
Commissioner Dorson?
So I don't know how much detail you want to get into now, since we're going to talk about this on Friday, but I just had a couple of questions on this report. So it says in here, the Orange Chapel Hill Midday Connector has 15 average daily trips or daily riders?
That'd probably be riders. Yes, that's in the midday. The bulk of that service is more around the peak times, in the morning and the afternoon. So we get, the service that we provide is more in the midday.
And so, I mean, is that, is that financially feasible to continue to maintain a route that only has 15 average daily riders?
It is questionable, I will say. And again, I think the idea of mobility on demand, because we do have folks that do want to get from Chapel Hills to Hillsborough for various reasons, and vice versa. So again, the plan is not issue and marble.
Right.
It's designed to bring about ideas to better serve, you know, or make better on the current situation that we have with transit.
And if I'm looking at the, at the table that's figure ES2, the OPT Service Prioritization Summary, and it describes all the different possibilities, I mean, could you go down that list? You don't have to do it now, maybe we can do it on Friday. But of all these 14 services that are described, I mean, how many of those would, would you describe as mobility-on-demand services?
I would say definitely zonal services, as well as the van pool services.
And the, so like, and some of that stuff is not currently funded?
It is currently funded. If you look over in the column, like, the one, two, and three, those are all proposed to be funded.
And then what about, like, the Van Pool Subsidy Program 7? That would be a mobility-on-demand?
Yes.
Okay, and that one's not funded right now. I mean, I guess, you know, we've talked about this before, about whether we need something more like, you know, like a county Uber-type of service, you know, which is mobility-on-demand, I think. And so it would be, I don't know, at some point, it would be interesting to know this, from this list of 14 possibilities, if you have any, or we could get any kind of projected ridership numbers. So, I mean, that would, so if there was something where you could say, you know, if we improved zone services, number 10, we could expect this much, we can anticipate this much ridership, and then we could evaluate, is that better than 15 average daily rides a day in this fixed route system? Because, because, I mean, I appreciate that, I really appreciate this report in that, you know, we've really put a priority on providing transportation alternatives, but there are demographic and density realities that make different models work better in different places. And so if, if we were able to be able to say, I mean, I'm just picking things at random. So one of these things that's not funded, that's a mobility-on-demand service, if we were to be able to say, money put here would likely see this many more riders than we see on this fixed route system, that would help me, and I think my colleagues, say, well, let's, let's reprioritize than how we're spending that money. Does that, you know?
Yeah.
So maybe that's for the conversation on Friday, but I do think, you know, I mean, having a better understanding of what we think, and I know some of it's projected, and, you know, we're spec, we don't know, but having a better sense of these same dollars here, we think would be, would produce X number of rides, or a greater number of rides, or, you know, would result in this sort of cost savings as compared to what we're doing now.
And the report does go into the existing conditions, and they did do market analysis. So they did look at the demographics, socioeconomics, and they looked at, you know, projections in terms of, you know, the area growth. So that's factored into some of the prioritization summary.
Well, if you have more information on that, you can share. That would be, that would be ideal.
Commissioner McKee, then Commissioner Markopolis?
Yes, sir, thank you for this. I had asked before, several months back, whether any studies were being done about using exactly what Commissioner Dorson mentioned of an Uber-type service for, and I was speaking more of outlying areas, but I also agree 15 riders on a fixed service seems to be a bit ineffective. Have you all started moving into evaluating, or maybe looking back for the past three or six months and seeing what a cost would have been for some of these on-demand services if we had used Uber or Lyft or that type of a service model, rather than our own fleet?
Yes, sir. We, in our discussions with the consultant, they have looked at our served, our existing conditions. They've also went out to other locations, other entities that have developed mobility-on-demand or microtransit, and they've done comparisons. And that's, again, that's something we can bring to the, before the board at the retreat.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Markopolis?
What's the status of the reverse circulator?
Well, that's one of the items, one of the suggestions, I think at the top of the list, talked about the circulator, and that's one of the ideas that we developed, and we strongly support and advocate for with the consultant.
So is there any, any timeframe that we've got in mind?
Hopefully this year.
Okay.
So just two things, I remember Commissioner Pellicia and being on the MPO board, when we would talk about what Commissioner Dorson is talking about and getting numbers and stats, they wanted to run the service for a number of, a certain amount of time before you can really figure out what's, what's what. And so I don't, I don't know what that timeframe is. Is it a six-month timeframe? Is it a year? And we don't, we don't need to talk about this now, but I just, we could talk about it on Friday. I just recall hearing that you can't just take numbers from one month and expect that to be what it is. So I'm wondering at, on Friday, if when we talk about what Commissioner Dorson is recommending, is how, how we pull the real numbers? You know, is it, is it a six-month timeframe? Is it a year timeframe? I remember even hearing a two-year timeframe at one point. So if we could just zero in on that, that would be my only request on this. Additional comments? Commissioner Price?
Yes, as we're looking at the options, if you could also let us know what the cost would be to the, to the rider, to the consumer?
Cost per rider?
Well, yeah, the cost per rider, or what they would have to pay, for example, I mean, if we had to go to Uber, that might be cost prohibitive to people that are, that need to ride, as opposed to maybe something that's provided by the county, you know, a van that picks the most-
More of a fair structure subsidy-
Yes.
-cost to the passenger.
And I wasn't suggesting a private Uber. I was suggesting a county-run model like that, where it's on-demand, and so could be subsidized in some way.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes, also to Commissioner Price's comment, could you also check into how a DSS and possibly the Health Department would play into offsetting some of these costs for some of our lower-income neighbors?
Okay.
Because I know there's some programs that play into that.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bedford?
Also in the report, it talked about if you split that Hillsborough Connector into, some of the comments were that it just takes too long to get around, so people don't ride it. So we have to weigh the cost of adding the additional driver and service with, with how would you project the increase in ridership? I think we're losing, it sounded like we're losing some riders because of the length of the intermission, you know, that you have to just wait. People talk about having to run and hope they don't miss the bus, or, and, and I don't know how, you know, the mechanics of that, but if you have any information on those types of projections, that would be helpful.
And I can bring those forward on Friday for you. We do have numbers on, on the current costs and ridership data. That shows exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Price?
Yeah, the Hillsborough Circulator's been a topic of discussion for many years, and it's, the issue is that it could take you five minutes to get from point A to point B, but then when you want to go back home, it would take you 55 minutes for an hour.
Standing there.
So that's why we've been trying to get the two headways for a long time.
And not to say that we don't have passengers that like riding the circulator.
Why would do that? Just get on.
Any additional comments for Mr. Littman? Okay, well, thank you so much, and we'll see you on Friday, and I'm sure we'll have a robust conversation at that point. Let's move on to 7B, Go Triangle. And while you're making your way up to the microphone, I'm just going to give everyone a little background on what we're doing here tonight. This is a report on the Transit Oriented Development Study. It's a pretty large book. We got it at the MPO the other day, and I think they're being handed out now. And this is for the area, all the areas, but we're, if we specifically want to talk about the gateway station-
I gave mine away.
...where we can grow some economic development, let's just talk a little bit about how that happened and where the gateway station moved, and then I'll hand the mic over to Patrick. If you all recall, Commissioner Jacobs and Commissioner Dorson were our negotiating team at the time, and they met with our Durham counterparts and Go Triangle to get the gateway station moved closer to Orange County, specifically so we can create what seems to me like our fourth Economic Development District in Orange County. It isn't Chapel Hill, but it would be like our other Economic Development Districts. We could take advantage of what that has to offer. It is Highway 15501 and 40. And we hear from Chapel Hill a whole lot, how they need to have more office space, and they haven't built office space in a while, and this gives us a great opportunity to do that. But also, what, as we go through this report, let's remember that the reason that we create Economic Development Districts is to take the burden off the homeowners for paying such high taxes. And if we can create a way to bring more tax dollars into Orange County, that's what we want to be doing. I will remind everyone, in the southern part of the county, the split between retail and business and homeowners, homeowners association, homeowners' burden on taxes, about 80% to 20% business. So this really does give us a great opportunity to create a wonderful Economic Development District, and Patrick, I'm going to let you take that away.
Sure, thank you. My name is Patrick McDonough, manager of planning and transit-oriented-
My name is Patrick McDonough, manager of planning and transit-oriented development with Go Triangle. I have Jay Hykes, our TOD planner, with us here this evening as well, who did significant work on this document. So first, thanks for having me here. To give you just overview background very briefly, this work is the result of a federal grant that came to the land use planning jurisdictions around the Durham, Orange Light Rail Corridor. So that was, in terms of the station areas, Town of Chapel Hill, Durham City County planning, and then Triangle, Jay Council of Governments and Go Triangle.
Can you talk into that?
Oh, thank you. Is that better?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, I'll try and do my best to stay close to the mic. This is basically the culmination of two years of work by local and national experts looking at the corridor, and it's a little different than a lot of other studies that get done in places around rail stations, and that was the, the goal of the Federal Transit Administration, to try to do things together that are often done separately. So you'll see in this document, there are pieces about affordable housing, there are pieces about economic development, there are pieces about zoning, pieces about public spaces and greenways and parks. So I'm going to walk through sort of a high-level view of the document. You have 378 pages in front of you, don't feel the need to try to read any of it as long as we're talking, but when we get to the end, we'd welcome your remarks on what you want to dig in on, and we can try to touch on as much of it as you're interested in. So really, when we brought in Gateway Planning, who has done transit-oriented development planning in lots of places around the United States, one of the things that struck us is G.B. Arrington, who has done this type of work around light rail for over 40 years and primarily in the Portland, Oregon region, he said, wow, there's so much opportunity up and down this corridor. And so what's in here is the things that the consultant team found that we did interactively with Chapel Hill and Durham staffs to think about the places in those municipalities. Really, we're trying to do three major things, coordinating neighborhood planning, the market for walkable transit-oriented development. Generally, if you look at national surveys and you ask people, do you want to live in a rural area, in a very intensely urban area, or a sort of urbanizing suburban area, about 30% of the overall housing market suggests they would like to live in a place where they could walk to the store or to the library or something like that. And generally, our cities are built in a way that far less than 30% of the building stock is built in that way. So the consultants definitely see a market opportunity for this in the corridor as the region grows. And the second piece was to try to collaborate as much as possible about the different local governments that participate in these decisions, universities and transit as well. We sat down with UNC on a couple of different occasions to get their feedback. Some of this stuff that came up in this process, I think if you look at their recently released draft master plan and look at this work together, you'll see the, the two concepts sort of talking to each other. I will emphasize one difference between the university's plan and what you see in the guidebook. When we talked to UNC, one of the things they made clear is that the plan that they were coming out with was for about the next 10 years, so, you know, 10 years beyond today. What you have in front of you is a plan for the next 40 years across the corridor. So to the extent that things are one-way in the UNC plans and another-way in here, you want to think about that there's 30 more years of stuff in the TOD guidebook. And finally, the, the point here was to look at how to facilitate economic development with the concentrating effects that light rail can have on different types of land uses in a community. At the high level, these are the outcomes that the, the gateway planning team and the consultants think are possible. Over 43,500 new jobs within the first quarter mile of the stations, another 44,000 residents up and down the line, which would generate about 4 million new annual transit trips. And I think when we think about what that means, it's an opportunity for people who live there and for people who can take buses into those neighborhoods if they don't live there directly, to live lives that are lower energy use, where they do more walking around the neighborhood and perhaps have more activity that has public health benefits, that has closer access to jobs. I heard once that the, the best renewable energy vehicle is not an electric car, it's actually a shoe, because it runs on whatever you had for lunch. If you can walk to the store to spend money, that's money that you don't have to send through an oil company before you get to participate in the economy. The guidebook itself has four major categories of recommendations. There are affordable housing, zoning, streets and public space, economic development, and then catalytic infrastructure and parking. And I think the most important part of this diagram are those two black arrows that kind of go from one section to another. All of the recommendations in here were written with the idea that they would interact with each other to build on each other for greater overall success in pursuit of community goals. I have an example of how, at one station in Durham, we saw this emerge through the process to walk through as we get further on. At the economic development level, we, we started off with a market analysis, which looked at the entire Triangle region, and then looked to sort of a rail corridor submarket in Durham and Chapel Hill. There's really three pieces of that kind of central Durham around downtown, southern, southwestern Durham, which is sort of the area from about University Tower, the, you know, glass-blue building there in south-central Durham, around where the South Square Mall used to be, over towards Patterson Place, and then Chapel Hill Market. And when the consultants look at the market overall, they look at like Chapel Hill Carboro as the Chapel Hill Market, so it's bigger than just the Town of Chapel Hill itself. But what's important to draw distinction between the, it's important to draw distinction between the market study, which projects an overall market that might want to settle in station areas, and then the physical stuff that actually comes in, which is a subset of the market. And so as we worked with both the Town of Chapel Hill and the City of Durham planning staff, we got advice like, you know, this side of the street, that's not going to develop. There's a neighborhood over here where the transition would be too much, so we don't want to put that place on the, on the potential for development. So when you see the station areas that are listed in the book, there's over 7,000 acres, but in conversations with Durham and Chapel Hill planning staff, there's really 1,360 acres in which this entire opportunity they expect to be realized. So when you look at those 1,360 acres with the amount of building that could happen there, that is sort of in touch with the market demand for our region and for these submarkets in our region, they project a net new property value of 3.3 to 4.5 billion dollars. When that gets converted into property tax, net new annual tax revenue up about 45 to 60 million dollars. And then if you put that together through 20, from 2018 through 2057, that total is about 1.4 to 1.9 billion dollars. These dollars are also inflated out and discounted back to the present, so if you were in discussion, say, with the schools that you were going to build a $25 million addition to the schools, the dollars in here are like 25 million you would have in this year's budget, and it was done deliberately that way to make it current with how we think about dollars in annual budget decisions. If you break that revenue out by jurisdiction, looking at current tax rates, this does not assume any property tax increases in any of the jurisdictions, about 25 to 35 million would accrue to the Chapel Hill Carboro schools over that time, 100 to 135 million to the Town of Chapel Hill, 110 to 150 million in Orange County, 480 to 650 million to Durham City, and 680 to 920 million to Durham County. So one of the key pieces of the book, which is somewhere around page 254, are what we refer to as action steps. And the action steps, Scott Polikoff gave us this definition, work that is part of an intentional and coordinated leadership-driven game plan built on community goals. We heard from the public in this process and in meetings we held, we did a week-long charrette at numerous points in Chapel Hill, and we heard about more green space, we heard about more opportunity to walk, greater diversity of local businesses in, in near neighborhoods that people could walk to. And this is trying to figure out, the action steps are recommendations to local government bodies, this board included, on how to take action toward those goals, and we'll talk about some of them in detail. So really, we have seven categories of action steps. One is prioritization, in which ways do you want to pursue some of these goals. Affordable housing, this is actually, if you look at the number of action steps in the book, the biggest number of action steps are actually in the affordable housing category, because we heard that so many times over here, we need so many new tools, and that the environment for affordable housing is quite challenging in North Carolina. The state legal playing field denies us opportunities that are available in other states, and so we push the consultants to be as creative as possible in thinking about what we can do rather than what we are not allowed to do. Infrastructure and things that will complement and make the light rail stations more useful to the neighborhoods around them and to places further away. Parking within districts that have heavy transit use and you're trying to encourage more walking and biking, parking needs to be managed a bit more differently than we've done in the past in most of the community. Partnerships, new ways of working together. One thing that Gateway Planning told us is like, you guys coordinate hard here, because they come from a place where the cog doesn't have as good a relationship with the city governments and the transit authorities that we've been able to manage here. So they saw that as an advantage that we have as, as a region, we, even while we have disagreements, we tend to come back and work together, and that we should try to continue to capitalize on that. For streets and public space, looking at how places that are becoming more walkable feel safe to walk and contribute to those pedestrian safety outcomes that were raised as a concern at the MPO meeting last week. And then zoning, sort of the regulatory framework that encourages these various things to be possible. So we did talk a lot in the process about Gateway and Patterson Place, and I think the consultants do see these two stations together as, as a unique opportunity, and they mentioned on multiple occasions, they think that a corporate location, corporate relocation opportunity is present here. These are the two concepts of the Gateway and Patterson Stations, the Gateway Station on the bottom left, Patterson Place Station on the upper right, you have I-40 kind of coming through the middle from the upper top-left to the bottom center, and that's 15501 going from the lower-left to the upper-right above the two concept plans. Easttown is labeled over there, which is near the Gateway Station, so that's also something in, within Orange County to consider as well. So looking here at this part of the line, one of the things we'll talk about sort of on the action steps are recommendations on infrastructure. There's a sewer pump station that's needed, we heard from the Durham Water Department, that they did not have water capacity out here to accommodate significant new development. So if that was to be planned, a capital improvement program line item needed to be put in for water and sewer capacity. Danziger Drive, this is a road that dead-ends right where the two station areas face each other. If you've ever tried to cross Old Durham Chapel Hill Road on foot, it is very dangerous. I know many people around the region have worked on the Old Durham Chapel Hill Road bike and pedestrian projects, and while that does help, I think that there's a recommendation that if we had a built right from the first time, street that accommodated cars, pedestrians, bicyclists, people in wheelchairs, all safely and efficiently, it would be beneficial, it would improve pedestrian connectivity and help connect the two sides of the, the two stations. Finally, connections across 15501, both from Patterson Place to New Hope Commons and Gateway to Easttown will help bring and sort of extend the opportunity of the stations across 15501 to those two major areas that already have development. Next, I want to pivot over towards the affordable housing side. One of the things, again, we asked the consultants and challenged them to dig in hard on was, where are we with learning about how to, to work on affordable housing, especially in our legal landscape? And so they went out and kind of reviewed the, the emerging research, and this was probably the most interesting piece we found, which is, in the Bay Area, things are much worse than they are here. San Francisco and San Jose have been dealing with these acute problems for longer than most of the rest of the country, and they're at a crisis point. So there is a center at Berkeley, I think it's called the Berkeley Displacement Center, and they, this is all they do, they do research on this. So with their study of the, the Bay Area, what they found is at the regional level, additional market rate and additional subsidized housing both reduce displacement pressure, doesn't eliminate it. You can't take away displacement pressure completely in a market economy, but they saw that you can at the regional level reduce it or slow it by adding both subsidized and market rate housing. They also found that each subsidized affordable home reduces displacement about as much as two market rate homes, but the most important finding in their research was that all homes help. And so to kind of demonstrate that, I'm going to use the analogy of musical chairs, because musical chairs and housing markets are not entirely different. And so thinking back to childhood, I have three circles here in purple that represent three individuals, and we have two chairs. In musical chairs, the music stops, and faster people will beat slower people to chairs, and then someone is left out. Housing markets, again, we have three people here and two homes. This is most often experienced when a renter's lease renews, so a lease turns over and there's competition, and a higher-income individual or household will beat a lower-income individual or household to that home. And I think the key in both places is that if you add more chairs in musical chairs or add more homes in the housing market, you reduce more competition, you reduce some competition and you let more people participate and are more likely to match people to homes. So if we think about that as a construct, how do we reduce competition? There's really two ways that our consultants are, are talking to us about that. I've changed the, the diagram here a bit, and what I've gotten now is I've got two people up above, if you look at the purple circle, you'll see two dollar signs, that represents a higher-income individual, and you'll see a green circle with a, a single dollar sign that represents a lower-income individual. So now we're a region that has people moving in, the Triangle is one of the fastest-growth regions in the country, so when a new person who has higher income moves in, then what happens is they might wind up competing with the lower-income individual who's already housed here, but if there's a new market rate house that is sort of commensurate with what they're looking for, that other individual might be attracted to the new unit, leaving the current unit for the lower-income individual who already has a home. So in that case, the new market rate home is reducing competition that, where a home is serving an existing low, low-income resident. On the other side, again, we have another high-income individual coming to the region, again, competing with the home occupied by a low-income individual, and the key here might be also, the second way to address it is to have a home that is qualified for low-income individuals specifically. And so maybe that person can get to that home. And as Commissioner Price pointed out when we discussed this at the MPO, in this, in this example, displacement has still occurred, and she's correct. I think the hope is that when this move happens, it may be the last time this individual is displaced. So again, we can't completely prevent displacement, but these are ways that adding homes can help address it. So how does that come out in terms of action steps in the guidebook? There's really two approaches that, one looks at how we think about those market rate homes, and one that thinks about the affordable homes, and I'm going to talk about both. Within the zoning, streets and public space, we have really three key pieces. We're adopting transit-supported future land use map designations and policies to let the development community know where we think this growth should go and what expectations we have from them in terms of how it comes out in terms of community benefits. Establishing TOD standards and review processes, building placement and how big the buildings are, what's the streetscape like, are there street trees? One of the discussions that was going on in the Herald Sun when we were doing this is that somebody did a study of where the street trees are and where they aren't in Durham, and you will not be surprised to find out that the low-income neighborhoods in Durham have fewer street trees than the wealthier neighborhoods. And so this is where design standards matter, both for public health, for safety, for equity, for having places where people see greenery in all parts of the city. And then public spaces, giving places, people places to gather and figuring out how to have places that can be for the neighborhood to get together in, in the community. Within this piece on the affordable housing side, removing barriers to missing-middle housing near light rail stations was one of the most important recommendations from the consultants. Durham is looking into this right now with what they're calling their Expanding Housing Choices Program, and just an example of one of the barriers is if you're a single-family homeowner in Durham and you have space in your lot, they're looking at, if you wanted to build a small, you know, 500 square-foot cottage in your backyard to rent to somebody, and because it's smaller, probably a relatively modest front compared to some of the other things, making sure that there's no required parking space, that somebody has to pay a part of their backyard to put a parking space in, and looking at whether or not the same fees are needed to build that, that smaller unit. On the affordable side, we talked about the revenue generated by the transit-oriented development earlier in the meetings, and this is really where there's an opportunity to leverage some of those new property values through decisions by policymakers to help fund affordable homes. We know that the state and federal funding environments for affordable housing have been challenging, but this is where our opportunity as a growing region is to try to reinvest in ourselves. Another piece that the consultants were excited about were, if there are ways we can incentivize landlords to rehabilitate and preserve affordable homes, and Karen Lotto, who is Durham's lead on affordable housing policy, made a real astute observation in this discussion. She said, "Most of the housing that's here, that will be here 20 years from now is already here today." Think of that, most, most of the housing 20 years from now is already on the ground in our communities, which means as it gets older, there are going to be multifamily properties that might be expensive today but get shabbier, and then at some point, the owner has a choice. Do I renovate this apartment complex and put in the granite countertops and the expensive appliances and raise the rents, or do I sell it off? And so one of the things the consultant thinks we should be attuned to, is there an opportunity for our communities to try to purchase some of those units when they are in the lower end of their lifecycle, they cost less per unit, and then preserve them where they go from being sort of naturally occurring affordable housing to legally binding, permanently affordable. That's a transition opportunity, and I know Durham is looking at an acquisition fund that might be able to figure out how to do that in the Durham market. That's something to think about here. Finally, removing regulatory barriers to housing and recalibrating density bonus programs. One of the things that the consultants were actually pretty excited about was that they felt like Durham and Chapel Hill had both done some good experimenting in bonuses for affordable housing in terms of, I think Chapel Hill waives development fees for affordable projects, Durham has recalibrated their density bonus three times in the last five years, and they're working on a fourth recalibration right now with the idea of test, see if the developers engage at a level the city wants from a policy goal, if not, recalibrate. And so their message there was keep trying stuff and don't be afraid to have some things not work out, because not everything works in every community, and you'll find that different affordable housing strategies work along different parts of the line. What might work at Gateway might not work at Alston Avenue in Durham, it might not work at Hamilton Road, depending on what the conditions are. So they encouraged us to try stuff, not be afraid to say, we tried five things and only two of them worked, let the three go that didn't work with the other two, and try again. Let the three go that didn't work with the other two, and try again. Finally, just sort of the power of cross-department coordination in putting some of these topics together. We felt like we had a really fruitful discussion at Patterson Place when we got the water folks involved, because we learned things we just didn't know, which is that while there is some moderate density that's occurred at Patterson Place in recent years, there's a four- or five-story Duke Medical Building over there, and there are some apartments being proposed, that to do anything significantly greater, there's going to need to be a sewer pump or lift station. And that's probably, I think the Water Department thinks it's about a $5 to $7 million investment, and they said, "No, single developer would ever do that." But it's sort of a blockade to all developers doing the next project at a level of Transit Orient Development density in that area. So, from the point of view of Durham City, they're now looking at, should we be prioritizing a pump station in the Patterson Place area to sort of take that off the table, so that when the developers come in, they're not worried about sewer capacity, and they can engage them more aggressively on affordable housing, which is one of their key topics. So, kind of looking through this, we learned about the need for the lift study, the lift station through the market study, and by getting that into the infrastructure program, there's an opportunity to let future development come forward, zoning changes done by planning, allow for more intense development, and put in that new affordable housing density bonus that Durham's talking about. New economic development revenue helps us then commit some of that towards the goal of something like affordable housing. Got this again here just because we get a lot of questions about it on the tax revenue. I do want to share a couple of slides I shared at the MPO to talk about the study itself, because we got some questions about how the study and the TOD guidebook relate. When we did the market study, that was in, I think, the early part of 2017. It was one of the first pieces we did in this work. The work took about two years total. The Triangle Region's grown about 3% to 5% historically over the past 30 years. That includes recessions, so there are years where we grew more, grew less, but about 3% to 5% over that long-time period. And Durham and Chapel Hill collectively has historically captured about 20% to 25% of that growth. Again, as I emphasized earlier, what's in the concept plans expressed in the guidebook is not, and then we allocated that growth here. If you look below, it says, I'm quoting from page 33, "To develop and fill the types of amounts of new building proposed in this guidebook, based upon the findings of the market study, Durham and Chapel Hill would have to capture about 13% of expected regional growth, about half of what they have captured in the past." And I want to show you what that looks like with a few charts. So, when we think about the market study, this is a forecast in the guidebook of multifamily in the light rail submarkets, which is, again, is central Durham, south Durham, and sort of Chapel Hill, Carboro is the Chapel Hill market. Through that time, there's a forecast of 65,000 to 100,000 demand for 65,000 to 100,000 multifamily homes over the next 40 years. And that's the, sort of the... The purple line, which is below the lower bound of the market study by a significant margin, is what's actually in the concept plans. When you look at how many homes are actually in the plans, it's about 24,800 in Durham, and about 3,200 in Chapel Hill. So, if you think over 40 years and divide 3,200 by 40, that's about 80 units a year. Chapel Hill right now has about 22,000 housing units, and so, 1% of that would be 220. So, if you think of 80, it's about, you know, a little over a third of 1% growth with the multifamily homes that are allocated in the guidebook. On the office side, similar. What we have in the guidebook is the purple line. The market study shoots above that, and about 17 million, or 16 or 17 million overall, 4.2 million square feet in Chapel Hill. If you look at that over 40 years, that's about 105,000 square feet a year. Dwight Basset did a presentation in December to the Economic Sustainability Committee, where they have sort of a low-end baseline of 75,000 square feet a year. So, the difference between what Chapel Hill Economic Development is projecting, and what is being projected for office in this book, it's like 2.1% versus 2.4%. On a per-year basis, it's one 30,000-square-foot building. I was curious what that was, so I looked one up. 501 Easttown Drive, if you wanted to Google that, it's two stories. It's got parking on the first floor. So, final thought, because there were some concerns about building heights in the Gateway area, and I just wanted to go ahead and put this out up front. When people think about Chicago, they think about the Sears Tower, one of the tallest buildings in the United States, and in the loop here. And when you think about Paris, you think about a streetscape that, when you take away the Eiffel Tower and some church steeples, a lot of it is, you know, five to seven stories high. Paris as a city is twice as dense as Chicago. And so, how exactly you express the amount of development that can produce the economic development can be done in multiple ways. So, Paris and Chicago, two very different places. But, you know, in terms of what's on the ground, there's probably more square footage in Paris, even though it's shorter. With that, I'm done, and gladly take any questions.
Great. Thank you. We have questions for Patrick. We have one person from the public that would like to speak. Would you want to start with some questions?
Public.
Public? Okay. Ms. McClintock, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I've enjoyed the discussion tonight. I sent you a letter earlier this noon, and it was pretty long, and I'm not going to read it again. But the main point in the letter is that I was raising about this guidebook is that accurate information is essential, and it is critical for the FTA, for you as elected officials, and for the public to have accurate information and to send accurate information to the FTA. Just to remind you about what contents of the letter are without reading it, last October, you had a joint meeting with the Chapel Hill Town Council, and the two boards met together, and there were questions raised about the market analysis at that time. More recently, on January 16th, the MPO met, and Councilmember Parker and Mayor Heminger restated their concerns about the growth projections to Go Triangle. And to address them, they announced that they would bring a resolution to the council at the end of January that would clarify the council's position, because what matters in the end, what the elected officials think about what they want in their zoning jurisdiction. Just a couple of comments on Mr., on Patrick's presentation. I think it's easy to be seduced by the prospect of 1,360 acres that are rife for development, and people start seeing dollar signs. It's really important to know that a great many of those acreages are UNC property, not taxable unless there's some other arrangement reached. Many of them are in wetlands and undevelopable. And it's also important to remember that 15501 is probably three years away from gridlock, and I could support that with a big presentation that we put together, all the transit studies we've been doing in Chapel Hill. But 15501 itself is getting extremely crowded, and 80% of the trips to Easttown, we're thinking about the high-rises there and all the Big Office Park and so on, 80% to take the train, you have to ride a car to get there. That's what the estimate of the guide is. And then, I would just like to close that what we've learned in Chapel Hill is that in the last 10 years of primary residential growth, the cost of town government services has risen by an average of 3.7%, while property tax revenues only rose by an average of 1.3%. And the Budget Director stated this in a memo with, I think, some surprise, because I think that was an anticipated outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McClintock. Okay. Questions for Patrick? No questions?
Oh, I have a question.
Okay. Commissioner Bedford.
On the slide with the net new tax revenue by jurisdiction, define net, please.
Oh, define net, okay. So, the way to think of it is, there's a baseline property value set in the report. Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. There's a baseline that, let me pull it out so I can... Is there a station that we should work with that might be Hillborough?
No.
Okay. Let me look at, make sure I'm getting this right. So, we have a baseline property value, which is based on, I think we got it in July of 2017, which was when we did all the values, and we might have brought that forward to $20, $18. And then, there is sort of a, what if nothing happens, right? What if that property just kind of gains in value but doesn't redevelop over time? Okay? So, that's the baseline, and that gets inflated out into the future. The net new is, what happens if that property redevelops and has a new tax value, but we also subtract the value of that which was taken away. So, if you had, say, a one-story office building that, you know, gets replaced by a four-story office building, we would subtract the value of that one-story building, put in the value of that four-story building, and compare that to, as if nothing happened. And that's where the net new comes from.
So, so these don't include the cost of the sewage pump, or the bridge over 15501, or EMS, or any of the costs that are associated with development?
So, in terms of direct costs with development that are not borne by developers, the whole point, the whole point of having the critical infrastructure recommendations in the report is acknowledging exactly what you're saying, that where there are going to be other pieces of infrastructure that are going to be needed to make these fully functioning, you know, communities that have all the pieces in place. So, we're making, the report makes recommendations on infrastructure that, yes, like, would have, there were things that would have to be paid for. Yes.
So, also, I'm just trying to understand it. When it says cumulative revenue of 1.4 to 1.9 billion, I would subtract that from the 3.3 billion to build and finance the line, or not, and then much, and then we have fares, and we have as revenue. How am I supposed to think about this?
Sure. So, I would think of this as, this study is focused very much on the neighborhoods around the line, and the tax value in here is through the prism of property tax. What you were talking about, which is the cost of the build of light rail and long-term costs of operating it, and that is contained within the sales tax and the transit plans.
Thank you.
So, you could have, so, and the reason why we separate them is if you elected not to do any development at all around the light rail stations, you would still have all those costs for the light rail and maintenance and operation. So, that's why they're not mixed. This is about the neighborhood planning and not about the operation of the light rail itself, or the cost of the light rail.
But as an, okay.
Yeah.
Other questions? Commissioner Price, comment or question?
Both.
Both? Is it, are there any other questions? Okay. Commissioner Price, let's do questions first, okay?
Well, well, it's combined. So, as you indicated, and just for the board, at the MPO meeting, there were challenges from the mayor and Councilmember Parker about the growth projections. So, there were, and they cited a number of things. So, my question is, what are you planning to do with those challenges to your report?
We let the mayor and Councilmember Parker know that we would be happy to come meet with the Chapel Hill staff and talk about them. I actually think when you look at the material that Dwight Basset presented to the Economic Sustainability Committee in December, that our numbers are actually quite close to each other. And I think where some confusion might be is folks are looking at the market study, which is, what could the market attract if there was like no limits on development at all, versus what is in like, when the guidebook concept plans, which is a much smaller subset. And I think when comparisons are being made, folks are looking at the difference between the forecasts, which are completely unfettered, and the concept plans, which are very narrowly defined by things like, you know, where the buildings have been proposed here. So, that's where, I think there's some confusion there. Like Dwight, in his presentation, is quoting correct numbers about the market study, but it's not those numbers that are totaling up what is in the buildings and the concept plans. And I think there's a little wrinkle there, and if we got together, we'd find that we were mostly in agreement about the numbers.
Okay.
So, we've offered that to the town. We haven't heard from the town staff yet.
Right. And then, I believe, as you said at that meeting, that this is just one idea.
That's the other piece, and I...
And though it's like a ream of paper, it's only one idea.
So, that's an excellent point. And if this report, and I should have said this sooner, and I appreciate you reminding me, if this report had a subtitle, it would be called "One Possible Future." And the point is, there are probably thousands of possible futures, and this is one of them. And when we talked with the Chapel Hill staff, they asked us to write something that would recognize it, so I'm just going to read it, because this is on every single one of the concept plan pages. I'm just going to read the one from Woodmont and Chapel Hill. "This development concept represents one possible future for the year 2057. The actual outcome will be shaped by the private market's response to zoning, regulatory, and public investment decisions made by the Chapel Hill Town Council." So, we tried to acknowledge that as much as we could, but yes, there are literally thousands or tens of thousands of ways that could turn out as well. This is one of them.
Commissioner Rockup.
Could you talk a little bit about the 1,360 acres and the issue of, well, is university land being counted, and what's the value of university land? I mean, there's different types of development that UNC can do.
Sure. So, let me talk, we engaged UNC within sort of the first couple of months of getting started, and we tried to figure out the best way to get at the question of if the university has private development on it, is it taxable or not, which we know is sort of a public policy debate, and we looked at other university communities around the country to see what happens, and we also looked at local examples here. The first thing we did is, if you go and look at, in each of the station pages, there is a sort of development summary, and if you look at the ones from Mason Farm Road and UNC Hospital and the UNC Campus, you will see that it says really, "No private development." So, the way we handled it on the two campuses there is, we presumed it wouldn't happen. To the extent that you see some property value increases there, there's some private land that is within the station area that is just getting more valuable with inflation over time while it's not developing. In terms of other stations, and let's talk about Gateway for a moment, one of the things that we heard there was some concern about was Easttown being counted in the numbers at Gateway because of this exact question. So, if you look at the numbers on the Gateway Station page, which I think is page 122, the Easttown numbers for any development in Easttown are not in the tax calculations there. So, if you...
Can you say that again, please?
The Easttown, the value of any taxable value counted at Easttown is not in the numbers for Gateway Station.
Is that 122?
Page, I'm sorry, 124. I was incorrect.
Thank you.
So, if you're looking at that, Easttown is not counted in there. When you go into the appendix, which talks about the total value to Chapel Hill, the value for Easttown is counted in there, so that's one place where it does show up. And we had, we had a debate in the team about this. What was the best way to try to handle it? And we had several pieces of evidence that we didn't really know how to weigh, because ultimately, it's a negotiation between the town and the university. We had the following pieces. One was that, I think, as of 2012, properties in the Easttown area that UNC, I think, was paying close to or at 100% of a payment in lieu of tax for those property values. When we looked at the Carolina North Development Agreement that had been done, even though Carolina North is not going forward the way it was originally envisioned, there did seem to be some language about fiscal equity that had worked its way into the development agreement. We know that, this is where you guys might know than me, when UNC came up to Waterstone here, I believe UNC is making some type of payment to the town of Hillsborough, but you might want to check on that. I'm not sure. You know, I see a doubtful look, so I might be a little bit off there. Anyway, we know that those discussions have been broached, and there are other communities that have sort of college and medical uses where there are payment in lieu of taxes. I was in Pittsburgh for a conference, and I guess Carnegie Mellon or Pitt is paying a full 100% payment in lieu of tax to sort of a developing tech center on the border of the, one of the rivers through the city. So, we recognize that this is a policy and an interactive debate between the town and university. What we figured on trying to quantify it for the book was, for Easttown, we know what zero would be, and so, we tried to look at if they paid 100%, what would that would be, knowing that then you would have a bound between zero and 100. But, bottom line, for Gateway, there's no numbers for Easttown tax revenue in the Gateway numbers when you look at them. If you think about Gateway as an economic development zone, if you do look in the appendix, the Easttown numbers will be calculated in there. I agree that we could have a scholars differ approach on the number between zero and 100% in lieu of taxes, but we felt it was important, because this was a market-oriented study, to try to capture what that would be, so people could understand the scale of the opportunity in terms of what would settle there if the market allowed it. We recognize that that might not be what public policy prefers, but again, it's one possible future. It's not the only possible future.
Ms. McKee?
Yeah, on this acreage, go in a little different way and see if I can wrap my mind around it, because I've tried repeatedly over many years, and I've... Because I've tried repeatedly over many years and I've seen numbers, as you're aware, numbers have changed. The, the first number was 7,026 acres. That is the amount of area within these concentric circles in the station area. Is that correct?
So the best way to think of it, I've got the Gateway Station here, and you'll see that there's a red line around the station area. And so on all the pages where there is a station, you'll see the, the boundary. And if you sum all the red line areas, that adds to 7,026.
Okay. So for all of these, for all of these in Orange County, or all of these, the 7,000 acres is Orange and Durham County combined?
Correct.
Okay. Then you drop down to 1,360 or 1,361. That is the acreage in Durham and Orange that is redevelopable or developable? I, I heard you say redevelopable. Is that either redevelopable acreage or, or developable or both together?
It, it's both. So yeah, it could, it's depending on what the status of the land is, if it's vacant, it could be developable. Or if it has buildings on it, has the potential to redevelop. And that's really the assessments of the local planning departments telling us, we think this is likely to turn over, we think this is likely to stay the same way.
Okay. Out of these 1,360 odd acres, how many acres of that are environmentally sensitive that cannot be built on?
So there was a concern earlier that we were building in floodplains. I don't think that's happened anymore.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking, I mean, I'm just asking how many acres because of environmental impacts cannot be built on out of those 1,360?
So I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we can take a look. My sense is that when we looked at principles for how the plans were put together, most of the development is on land that the planning staff believes was developable and not subject to things like steep slopes, or it's a place where buildings are existing already, which means it would be a, a replacement of a building and not a, a new situation.
Okay. So I won't take anything off of that. And, and, and you're in your comments a minute ago, have you already discounted out of these 1,361 the acres that are owned by either UNC or other nonprofits?
So in terms of like a-
For all of Durham and Orange County, that you're counting in the original 726, dropping down to 1,361, of that 1,361, how many acres are not going to generate revenue because they're owned by a nonprofit or a university or a church or whatever, something that doesn't pay taxes?
Okay. So the study didn't look at it the way where we consider things in or out by acres.
I, I mean, I know that. But it's critical that we know how many acres we're going to have development on, actually have development on.
So the, and this is a, and Jay, I'm wondering if you could work on a number for me while I'm doing this, which would be summing the developable acres in the Chapel Hill stations while we're talking? That'd be great. The, the answer is the, I'm trying to put it in the way you're asking the question. We didn't do it by acres, but for Mason Farm and UNC Hospital, whether it's the way you think of it or the way I think of it, the answer is zero. Okay? And then at the other stations, we'd need to look at the status of the acreage. Generally, the redevelopable parcels are mostly parcels in private land. With UNC at the Friday Center, this is where in talking with UNC, we kind of asked them, should we consider private development on some of your land? And they said, we don't see that happening in our 10-year master plan. So within the first 10 years, that's not something that's part of the plan. If you look in the Friday Center station area, you will see some private development, but that's probably being picked up by the Tri-City Office Buildings and some of the private land that is in the station area. And I think the answer for sort of the long, into the last 30 years in places like Friday Center where there's a heavy UNC land component, you're getting down to that discussion about payment in lieu of taxes. So I don't know if I got your answer the way you wanted it.
Not really. But I think what I'm trying to get at is how much value per acre has to occur to be net positive? And, and you're saying you're going to, you're going to have 13, let's just use the 1,360. And how much, 1,360 acres, I'm, I'm not going to parse it down any further. 1,360 acres is supposed to generate how much revenue?
So that 1,360 is net new property value of 3.3 to 4.5 billion, net new annual tax revenue up and down the line of 45 to 60 million.
My calculator, my calculator wouldn't go quite high enough, so I had to sort of factor it down. That means that each acre is going to have to generate $3.3 million of, of new revenue.
At, at an average?
On 1,361 acres?
I don't doubt your math. What I would say is that we would expect to see wide variation in the quarter. Downtown Durham's going to have a premium well above that. And their other stations-
I'm talking about Orange County. I'm unconcerned with Durham.
Oh, okay.
The 1,361 is not, not, is Orange and Durham. I'm well aware of that.
Yeah, so-
But that is a huge amount, even with the high value in Durham. You don't have that much developable acreage in Durham proper, the, the city.
I, I mean, the Durham City staff feel quite confident that they have that acreage.
I, I guess my point is, as, as you're aware, for eight years, I've questioned the figures.
Sure.
I've not trusted the figures. I've, I've seen figures shift and shape, shift constantly. I think, and, and I would defer to Commissioner Green because she understands, I'm sure, this much better than I do. But I think in 2014, a study of a Chapel Hill, Blue Hill District on a cost-benefit analysis showed there was no, no net positive revenue for like 20 years out. And if I'm wrong, please chime in. I'm, I guess my question is, is when can we expect a net positive? At what point? And I know we're talking 40 years out, but do we have to go out 10 years before we go net positive? Because we've talked about leveraging property values for affordable housing, and that's a bit of a concern. Incentivizing landlords, lift stations is going to be needed, new infrastructure is going to be needed. None of that will be paid for by the, by the transit tax. And so of all this cost that we're going to have to incur, it's going to eat up a lot of that 3.3 to 4.5 billion, unless I'm missing something horribly. I, I don't, even if I didn't question the new net property tax revenue or the, or even the value, what I'm asking is when does this thing go net positive? And I don't know that there's an answer.
So I, I, I think the answer depends on what you include in the number that you compared it to for positive.
Yes. And we can use, and we've used, you and I have used different numbers-
Sure.
-for eight years now.
So, but on, on the revenue side, if you're, in the appendix of page A110, I have part of the answer for you.
Let me see if I can find that.
Sure. Should be quite near the back, like less-
And I'm going to be quite honest, I've glanced at this, I have not read through it. And I'll be even more honest, I doubt that I'll read this entire packet.
You have a lot to read, and I, I appreciate you reading what you-
I mean, I'll be quite honest with you.
Okay.
I'll, I'll scan it, but I'm, I'm not going to read it the entire packet for understanding. I, I have issues in here that I will probably focus on.
In that case, for you, I would recommend appendix G and the Chapel Hill Stations. That's less than 50 pages, probably. If you look at A110, you'll see there's a table that begins Orange County. It has sort of the, it is 2027, 2037, 2047, 2057. And so the bottom line in that table is the net new accumulated tax revenue. So 10 to 13 and a half million by 2027, you see that there? 36 to 49 million by 2037.
Okay.
So whatever you're including in the denominator, right? If, and there's a separate one of these for Chapel Hill as well on, on the next page. So whenever you're trying to parse the question of the ROI, separate from any of the other benefits of the project or neighborhood development, we think, and again, this is one possible future, and the fact that there are ranges are trying to capture some uncertainty about the future. But if you built out like the plans are laid out in this book, this is roughly what Gateway Planning thinks the revenue flow would be over that time. And depending on what you compared it to in infrastructure, you might say the ROI is positive, or it's not as good enough as we like, or it's really good, or it's not good at all. And that's really kind of in the, what are you comparing it to? But this is, I think, given the plans we have here and the opportunity before us, if you wanted to get a, a revenue forecast, we think this is reasonable.
I don't know if it'll make a better difference, but I, my concern is exactly what you're talking about, that in from 2018 to 2027, let's say we hit the $13.5 million new revenue. If, if our infrastructure cost and our associated costs for affordable housing, bridges, lift stations, whatever, our, our cost that we would not incur had exceeded that, we're not, we're, we're not revenue positive. I don't know where the break even is.
Sure.
And I'm not hearing anyone that should be able to tell me that answer.
Well, I, I think part of the answer is depending on what infrastructure you prioritize and where it was in your capital improvement plan, that would give you a better answer to that question. We have infrastructure recommendations that right now have no timeline. So it's hard to do ROI when the, the cost side, which you're rightly acknowledging, and I acknowledge it too, we don't have a timeline for that yet. So I, I agree that it's a, a topic for exploration when there's a CIP, and then you can have that, I think if you, maybe one of the ways to get at that question is to have, I hate to suggest work to others, but having the manager think about what that would look like in a CIP. And I don't know how you guys handled that on your other economic development districts, but maybe that's a tool that would help answer your question.
Commissioner Green?
Commissioner McKee, I just have a question of, I'm, I'm, I don't think I'm clear. When you say 3-point-something billion dollars, what are you referring to?
The new net, the net new property value, 3.3 to 4.5 billion.
Oh, okay.
And, and that's value. That's where I get the figure of 3.3 million dollars per acre new value on the 1,361 acres.
Okay.
Unless my calculator has lied to me. And my calculator would not factor in 4.5 billion dollars. It wouldn't take that many numbers.
Other questions? Commissioner Markoplos?
Couple of small, little detailed questions to kind of get at what, what's nonprofit, what's not nonprofit, types of development. So Glenwood Elementary is sitting perfectly near a station, right? And the Chapel Hill Carboro School District is planning on holding on to that school in anticipation of the money that will be made from the higher cost land at the stations and the potential for development there. Now, is that, would something like that be considered a nonprofit, a off-the-books, undeveloped? Was that-
Let me turn to Jay to see if he has a, an answer about the Glenwood Elementary School.
And I assume there's other similar situations here and there.
Specifically, Glenwood Elementary School is not considered part of that developable area. If it's shown on, shown on here, that may be, it's not considered a revenue source. Patrick's going to look that up. But to get at the broader question, the tax revenue is based on the property tax base that exists today. So right now, Glenwood Elementary School does not pay property taxes. So that baseline is continued forward. So the same thing if we look at UNC Hospitals or Duke Hospitals or wherever else. Those don't pay taxes today, those are assumed to not pay taxes in the future.
Right. Yeah, so it's complicated. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of things that could happen as, as, as we go forward.
Yeah. Yeah. And so Glenwood is not highlighted as part of the developable, the redevelopable, the redevelopable area in the Hamilton Station. It's in the area, but it's not, and that was sort of the advice we got from staff. We should not, at the time we did this work, did not presume that the Glenwood Elementary School would be available for redevelopment. So.
Other questions?
One other question. We're talking about redevelopment potential, new value brought by this system. Has there been any study of how much value, how much new development, how much new tax revenue will occur naturally without it? Because we also know that there's 20, you know, the growth rate's 3%, a year, natural.
Yeah. So that's actually, when you look at the net new over the baseline, the baseline presumes that the land grows in value-
So all of this is above what would occur without?
Yes. So, so for example, and a great way to see how, a great way to see evidence of that is to look at the UNC Hospital and Mason Farm Road plans, where there is no development imagined here, but the property tax revenue does go up. And that's because the other properties that like might, I mean, you know, like just south of Mason Farm Road, there's some single-family homes. Those are in the halo. We don't think those are going to redevelop, but they're going to go up in value. And that's where that extra net new tax revenue, it's that rising of the, the land that's there, even if it's not redeveloped. So it is above the 3% a year.
Just one more?
Yeah, sure.
Did you, so did you have time to remove the Easttown from this chart also?
I would need to check, but my sense is that Easttown is probably in the corridor total of the 1.4 to 1.9 billion, though it's, like we said, it's not in the Gateway Station. So it's, my, my sense is I'll need to check, but my answer for right now would be the Easttown is likely in the 1.4 to 1.9.
Okay.
But it's not in at the station level.
Commissioner Markoplos?
Does have a comment? Is this question time over?
Are there any other questions? And then we could start commenting. I have a bunch of comments also. Okay. Let's do comments.
So one, it's, it's very complicated to think about the costs and the benefits because you have a lot of things you can't really predict very accurately. I mean, none of this stuff can be predicted very accurately, but somewhat accurately. But you've got, you've got the jobs that are being provided, the, that employment leads to people with less needs. You've got, so lower cost of services. You've got less congestion, talk about 15-501 and the concerns there. When you have a station that can bring people from Chapel Hill, from UNC Hospital out to Easttown, just for one example, you are keeping people from driving on 15-501. So there's a lot of ancillary benefits, less pollution, you're protecting rural areas from sprawl development, you're taking pressure off of, of the concerns about, you know, breaking through the rural buffer and even jumping the rural buffer and developing out into what is a jewel of Orange County, the rural area, the county. And thinking about the language, you said that, you know, the one future language, you talked about, you know-
One possible future.
Possible future. So, and, and you, you stated the obvious, that it's going to be a product of decisions that are made, zoning decisions that are made, and, and ways that, that elected officials view where they live. Do they want to preserve at all costs, you know, a 1990s or 2000 version of their, their village? You know, do they, do they see other possible futures? And so I'm really excited about this idea of, of a fourth economic development district because what we're talking about is doing the best that we can to raise the revenue for affordable housing, for education, for all of the things that we struggle with in budget time, and we're on the verge of struggling again, right? So if we're, you know, affordable housing, a lot of creative ways to, to do it, but it oftentimes comes down to government subsidies, and that comes down to revenue. And this is where we can take advantage of this. And I, I see a, a potential for a collaborative effort with Orange County and Chapel Hill to make the most of our opportunity to meet these needs, which we struggle to meet. We discuss all the time how, how difficult it is to get the economic development that surrounding counties get. And how do we, you know, meet our needs with a state government that is not always working with us? So I think we have a great opportunity, and I believe we would be doing what the citizens want us to do because we hear these concerns constantly. And I also think that, you know, it's easy to sit back right now and some people kind of, you know, they're, they're sort of keyed into, well, what's wrong with that? What's wrong with that? What's wrong with that? Instead of trying to think of like, what can we do? What, you know, can we, can we envision a future where we accept these challenges and we make these things happen, right? So I also think that in, you know, if and when the, the full funding grant agreement comes through, the whole perspective is going to change. It's no longer going to be, what can I do to cast the project in a bad light? It's going to be, okay, this is going to happen, right? And as the years go by toward 2027, sometime in the 2025, whenever, I'm, I'm not a development expert, but somewhere around that time, there's going to start to be serious interest from companies and developers around these station areas. And at that point, I guarantee you that people are going to see the benefit of serving the citizens by maximizing that development in, you know, in appropriately designed ways to take advantage of this opportunity for revenue and to create the, the kinds of neighborhoods- and to create the, the kinds of neighborhoods that people are going to want to live in without vehicles. So I'm, I'm really excited about, about where this is going. And so many people from so many jurisdictions in Orange County were part of this. I mean, there were a lot, I'm impressed that there were so many people from Chapel Hill, so many people from other areas in the county that participated in creating this. And that leads me to believe that there was a lot of cumulative knowledge brought to the process.
Other comments?
Well, I have a few. I'm really excited about this too. And I think we should be looking at it as our fourth economic development district. I, I had the pleasure of going with Steve Brantley on a, a economic development summit in the fall. Happens twice a year in North Carolina where they bring people in from all over the country. And you get to sit there and you get to listen to what people, why people would relocate to your county. The number one, number one issue with everyone I spoke with was public transit. The next generation of workers don't want to drive. They want public transit. They want to live near the public transit. They want to work near public transit. They want to play near public transit. So using that, for me, this is, this, the, the prospect of, of building Gateway to the way that we need it to be built is really exciting. And I, I agree with Mark. I think our partnership with Chapel Hill, with their planning department, with Economic Development Department, housing, certainly those that are very invested in affordable housing, like Commissioner Green, schools, like Commissioner Bedford. I mean, I think that we need to, we need to partner with all of these folks to make sure that this is what we, what we think about when we think about economic development. I do want to say, I, I did look at who, who was involved in this also. And I believe Chapel Hill Planning Department was, was, worked hand in hand with Go Triangle in this. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, so we worked with them throughout the, the entire process. And we had six months with, six meetings separately with them between May and September, leading up to the final draft. They were in the room with Gateway Planning as we were talking about the final draft. When I, that statement I read to you about one possible future, Ben Hitchens and his staff pretty much wrote that. We included that because they wanted it there. And we, we tried to, we got good comments from Craig Benedict from your staff in October. We got comments from Durham, the COG, like John Hodges Koppel and his team who've worked. I want to give credit to Aspen Romain and Erica Brown. There, you have two really smart people in affordable housing over at the COG. And for those of you who, who do want to do some reading, I, there's actually two appendices on affordable housing. Dig in, there's some really good stuff in there. This was exciting. I, Scott Polikov told our, our board that we might take for granted in the triangle how much intergovernmental cooperation we have and that we are functionally used to doing. And he said, the, the type of collaboration that just seems to happen here with phone calls and emails doesn't always happen in the other communities they work in. And so I think for me, having worked on this for two years, the, how can we keep that going? And how can we leverage that as a competitive advantage against other community, other regions around the country? Is an opportunity for us. And how to continue with that is one of the things I've, I've been thinking about.
Well, I think, I think one way of, I'll get to, one way of continuing this conversation is Ms. Manager, is to start really having conversations with Chapel Hill. So we, you know, we, we could start, you know, we, we, from the beginning, we said we wanted to be involved in the Gateway Planning and, and the Gateway Station. And I think now that we have this guidebook, we can start opening up those discussions again with the different departments. So maybe you and I could talk a little bit more about, about that approach and next steps. And we could start, you know, getting those meetings together and really talking. And, and again, it's not just what the council wants. It's what, what the, what the public wants and what the public needs. You know, we keep, again, we keep talking about how we are going to create economic development here to take the burden off of homeowners. And we have an opportunity here that I, that I think that we just can't deny. And so we need to get working on it and keep positive about it. Commissioner Green.
Yes, you, I remember when you got this grant a couple of years ago. It was a competitive process and it was, I really congratulate you for getting this work off the ground and, and working through it. And, and my experience for, as a, when I was on the town council was that you were working very closely with the staff at the direction of the council to come up with all of this, all of this work. And, and although I certainly respect the, the, the new council's views, it sounds like there are ways to work through a lot of that, most of that. I did want to, speaking of affordable housing, I wanted to mention that Chapel Hill, you know, has already changed its ordinances to allow accessory housing with limited, with, by reducing the required lot size, reducing the parking requirement. So that, that idea is already in place. I was really interested in the idea of purchasing an apartment complex as it's sort of on, on, on the downslope, as, as you said. That actually was an idea that a Chapel Hill developer proposed a few years back with a large development as making a contribution, their contribution to affordable housing. It didn't turn out that way, obviously, but, but it's certainly something to think about. The other idea that is, I don't, didn't hear you mention, I don't think, but I hope it's a possibility, is land banking. Has Chapel Hill talked any about the possibility of buying some land in, you know, in targeted areas while it's still affordable?
I don't have the latest on that from the Chapel Hill staff. I do know that land banking is one of the strategies that's in here. I know that the COG has kind of led our regional scan, which is basically what, what they would call a public opportunity sites, which are, are there any pieces of public land that are underutilized that could be home to affordable housing in all of the Triangle jurisdictions? So I, I think this has been with the COG's work heavily covered in Raleigh, Cary, Chapel Hill and Durham. So for our work here, we have a great resource there. And that's probably, you know, a great place to start on the land banking question.
And while voluntary density bonuses have not worked in the Ephesus Fordham District for the reason that it's, it's not enough of an incentive for the developer to do that, there is a history in other parts of the country near, precisely near transit. Mass, near, like in the Washington metro area where a voluntary density bonus, if it's significant, will attract density, will attract affordable housing to go along with density. So it sounds to me like with everything we have, plus these other resources that you mentioned, there are plenty of creative ideas, which certainly some of which will require a public subsidy, but there are plenty of ways to, to approach the, to attack the problem. I appreciate that.
I agree. And if I could channel Scott Polikov for a moment, he would say that one of the most important parts of the story is you can't regulate your way to more affordable housing alone. There has to be investment. And so he, he said early on, he said, these communities, you guys have admirably big goals, but that means to reach out them in the legal field, playing field you have in North Carolina, there will need to be a marshalling of more resources. And it's good to get that right out in the open. And that's how he'd say it.
Other comments?
I just want to mention one more thing about during the Orange, Durham, Chapel Hill work group, we learned how Durham is already being proactive on a lot of these things. So it's not only the pump station. They were land banking. They've been land banking for years because they're around the, the station. Commissioner Price is shaking her head as well. They, they've also started examining, and I think there's a, we can get, if we can get that report that was around Patterson Place, remember, do you remember that? We had, you had sent me that report. If we can get that to Commissioner Green.
Sure.
About the, how they took their circles and circled their, their stations and, and how they dealt with the affordable housing around it, I think is just brilliant. So if we, if we can pass that to Commissioner Green and maybe we could, all the commissioners to take a look at that as well.
Just one more. I'd also like to echo what you said about really drilling down into partnerships on affordable housing with the town. Point out that we're having our retreat this Friday and one of our topics is affordable housing and the, and the potential to partner more, more substantially and effectively. And this is a great opportunity to do that.
Yeah. I think we, we actually, when we're thinking about this station, we have to, we have to partner on everything. I mean, affordable housing, yes. And affordable housing in the station and affordable housing throughout the county. And I think that we, we could absolutely do a better job of that. But we need to, we need to start thinking about these conversations and having them all the time now. So, yeah, we'll, we'll start setting that, that up and continue to talk to our, our Durham partners. I have conversations with them all the time. They're willing to talk with anyone, so you can give them a call. Commissioner Markopolis.
I want to add to your request for the manager to start talking to Chapel Hill about how we'll collaborate in the future to specifically, if possible, get what their schedule is as they see it now in dealing with station development. You know, what their specific deadlines are, goals, and what meetings they're having, just so we kind of get a feel for the flow. You know, it's a little bit early in the process to, to really nail a lot of stuff down. But I think that would help inform us as to where we might fit in and be useful.
Absolutely. Okay, we're good? Thank you so much, I appreciate it. And if you think of anything else you want to send us, please do.
Thank you. What I got as a takeaway is the information about the affordable housing density bonus that Durham's working on at Patterson Place, transmit it to the group.
That's great.
Thank you.
Awesome. And Commissioner McKee, if you just put this in your bathroom every time you go in, you can read a couple of pages. Be good.
I think not.
You'll like it, it's good stuff. All right, let's move on to eight, the consent agenda. And do we have anything that is being pulled off of the consent tonight?
I'd like a comment about one.
Sure.
When, when, when is that appropriate?
You have to pull it off though, so we can approve the rest before you make a comment?
It's the, it's the first one, the budget amendment? Is that the one?
Would, E?
E? This doesn't have tabs, I don't know where I am in the agenda.
Budget Amendment five, would it be A, E?
It was the one where there's some amendment being done because the Partnership for Young Children is giving money to the library to restore the, their, their staff from .75 to one full-time position. And so, and I know.
Well, wait, let's, do you want, do you want to just find that and pull it so we can get approval on the rest of the agenda?
If somebody can find it for me, I'll pull it.
Eighty.
Is it E?
Eighty.
Okay, I'll pull it.
Commissioner Green is pulling A, E. Do I have a motion to pass for the rest of the agenda, please? Commissioner Dorison, second by.
Second.
E, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now Commissioner Green, eight E.
Okay.
Comments?
Budget Amendment number five. Just want to applaud the fact that the Partnership for Young Children is giving some money to the Orange County Library to restore to one full-time position their, their person there to help with reading for young people for that. It's because that's very important.
Great, and the county manager will pass that comment on. Great, okay. We are done with.
Going to prove it now.
We have to move, she has to move.
I'm sorry, yeah. Please move.
I, I move eighty.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Dorison. Okay, county managers report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and County Commissioners. I just have a few things to report tonight. One, which is a timely report. I have met with the Town of Chapel Hill County Manager. I meet with him on a monthly basis. And two of the issues that came up at one of the last meetings was the Wegmans Project and how we will be informed. And we have committed to, depending upon our economic development directors to keep us informed as managers and to report back to our governing boards on a regular basis when and if there are changes within the project. And Steve Brantley and Dwight are aware of that and we will go forward with that. Also, in regards to the Gateway Station planning, I have requested that our representative, Commissioner Markopolis and the Chair of the Orange County Commissioners, Commissioner Rich, be included on the distribution list for all correspondence and meetings related to the Gateway. And then I assume and would hope that you all would share that information with others, but then we would be aware when that is happening. So, and I sent a summary to Mr. Jones about the meeting and he responded back. And so we anticipate that that will be happening. So that, the, and then the other issue was the Hillsborough Train Station and also sidewalks. And I do have a meeting scheduled with Eric and Margaret. And I also, on the sidewalk issue, invited Dr. Wirt. And so we will be talking about those issues with Hillsborough. And I will report back as to the results of those meetings. Also, I would remind you, we've already mentioned that we will, there will be the VOCC Retreat on Friday at Cedar Grove. And then also next Tuesday, a week from tonight, we will be at the Assembly of Governments. We apologize, or I apologize on behalf of staff that we didn't get the retreat agenda to you sooner, but we were working on three agendas at the same time. It was an unusual circumstance. We used to have the retreat in the fall and we had everything within a week. So you did get your agendas today for the retreat on Friday. We were hoping to get it out, or today, we were hoping to get it out on Friday, but we ran into some glitches. So we appreciate your patience and consideration.
And when does the Assembly of Government agenda come out?
That, I will defer, I will look behind me. Hopefully Thursday, maybe Friday. We will let you know as soon as it's available.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
County attorneys report.
So on January 9th, the legislature met for their organizational meetings, both houses, and set a January 30th reconvening date. But also they set their deadlines for local bills. Those local bill deadline dates are March 6th for the House and February 27th for the Senate. And your legislative breakfast is not until March 11th. So I haven't been told that there's anything I need to be drafting for local bills, but we're having our first Legislative Issues Work Group meeting tomorrow. So if any of you have local bill needs, please communicate with the Legislative Issues Work Group Commissioners, Commissioner Price, Commissioner Dorison, so that we can get started on that. They, they will need to be drafted and ready pretty quickly this year.
You said March 6th?
March 6th for the House and February 27th for the Senate.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to appointments. And we're going to do the Chapel Hill Business Bureau first, that's 11A. And I just want to mention one thing on this. There is recommendations for each of the positions. Position number 15 is usually the Downtown Chapel Hill Partnership ED. He just came on, so he hadn't had the chance to fill out the proper information.
Process of filling out the application.
Right. But he didn't get, yes. So he did attend the last meeting. He'll probably attend the meetings, which is fine. It's not a, a voting position. So as soon as we get that paperwork and we could vote on him actually being there. But he has been, he, he came to the meetings already. So I just wanted to make note of that, that that will be met there. Okay, so I need a motion to, or nomination for these folks?
Let me do it.
Sure. Commissioner Bedford.
I'm in eight for position one, Dr. Rachel Shavitz. Position four, Tanya Moore. Position eight, Andrew Strickland. Position 11, Mark Sherburne. And position 16, Libby. I always get her name wrong. Huff, huff.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay, second by Commissioner Dorison. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Let's move over to Parks and Brex. Let me get there. Now we have two that I believe have been open for quite some time. So along with the recommendations, we can fill those positions. Is that correct?
You can, if you have a policy that you adopted that if appointments were left open for more than six months, that you could fill them with other applicants.
Okay. So let's take the, the recommended ones first. Commissioner Price.
I just want to say though, before that, that we do have an application forthcoming for the Cheeks Township slots. Would I ask that we wait?
I'm sorry, I could not hear you.
Where, how do we, do we have an application?
There is an application forthcoming for Cheeks Township.
Okay.
And I just asked this for, I mean, it's, it's up to six of you. But that we just wait to fill that one.
Okay, let's do the, let's do the two that were recommended first and then we can hold out and make sure that everybody wants. can hold out and make sure that everybody wants to do that. So does someone want to nominate those folks?
Position seven, Kim, gosh, Mantaruk. And position 11, Gina Raymond.
And we need a second?
Second.
Okay, by Dorson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And so Commissioner Price is recommending that we leave the number six, position Cheeks, open. Is everybody in favor of doing that?
Yes.
Okay. And then we need someone to nominate someone for position number three. And there's a big list. Okay, Commissioner Green?
I'll nominate Amanda Aragon.
Amanda Aragon. And second by Commissioner Markopoulos. Any other nominations? I see none. All in favor of Amanda Aragon, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. And now we're going to move to the outboard, which is 11C. We have one open at-large appointment, and we have one recommendation for position number eight. So let's do position number eight first.
We're just moving Art. He's already the Chair of the Board. We're just moving him. He went, he was in an at-large position.
Okay.
And we've had such a difficult time getting Little River Township applicants, and he's moved into Little River Township. So they're just moving him.
Okay, so we don't, we don't need to vote on him. Okay.
For him to move him over, but he's already in that slot.
So we already did that.
You can pick any one of the applicants that, for at-large position from the applicant interest listing.
So that makes sense. So everybody, everybody gets that, anyone on the?
The outboard does not make recommendations.
Yeah.
They leave it up to the Board.
They don't make recommendations, and anyone on that long list of folks can be nominated for at-large.
I'll nominate Todd Jones.
I'll second.
Todd Jones, second, and then by Green. And do we have any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor of Todd Jones, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, and that passes. Thank you. There are information items for you all to read, if you haven't done it already. And then we do have a closed session tonight, number 13, pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3, to consult with the attorney retained by the Board in order to preserve client, attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the Board. Do I have motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Dorson, so moved, second? Second by McKee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meet you in the back, everyone.
Yeah, just go back.
Okay.
Handy, real handy.